We're good.
We good on the left?
Yes, sir.
Good on the right?
Turn your mic on.
We're gonna call the Brunswick County Board of Commissioners' meeting to order for October 20th, 2025. Appreciate everybody coming out. We will get started. Commissioner Thompson has agreed to do the invocation and the pledge for this evening, so if you would please rise. Gentlemen, please remove your caps.
Father God, we give you thanks and praise for this day, Father. We ask that you be with us this evening as we deliberate over the county business. Father, give us insight and guidance on each and every item. Father, lead us in the right direction for the citizens of Brunswick County. Father, we give special attention to our military, Father, for those that have defended the right for us to actually be here this evening to serve, Father. Now, we give them all the appreciation that is due them for the service provided. We also remember our public safety, our police, our sheriff, our fire departments, our EMS departments, as they go and carry out the immediate needs of our community, Father. We ask that you watch over them and bless them as well. We ask all this in your holy and precious name. Amen.
Amen.
When allegiance is considered applied on the United States of America, it is a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in this form, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. All right, we're moving on. Any adjustments to the agenda? Mr. Attorney, did you have something?
Yes, sir. No, sir, it's already on there.
We're good, it's on here, I just, okay.
Oh, yeah, well, I have two.
Oh, go ahead.
The first thing I would like to add is, under administrative report, I'd like to add the topic of the the fair, Brunswick County Fair and Expo.
Number two.
On that, that would be item number two. And I would ask that, under the consent agenda, item number eight, operations services, the increase of the CPI that we, in contract terms, that we have a little bit more information about that, if we're gonna increase the at our convenience sites for the fees, if we're going to increase them by over 2%. And, and any contract terms, I think we need to have a brief discussion and review of that.
You have to move that to administrative. Number three.
To administrative, it'll be item number three, I guess.
Okay. Any other adjustments? If not, I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So move.
Second.
Williams and Sykes, any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Excuse me. All right, moving on to public comments. The rules of public comments, each speaker may speak for three minutes. If you have a group spokesman, that person can speak for eight minutes, but then nobody else from that group can talk, can come up and speak. When you get up to the podium, please begin by stating your name and address. All comments shall be civil, there'll be no personal attacks, no obscenities, or derogatory or slanderous remarks, or any comments regarding candidacy for public office. Speakers should not expect the commissioners to engage in dialogue or answer any questions. This is your time to tell us what you are thinking. Okay? I have handful of names here that have signed up. We'll start Shirley Sullivan.
Shirley Sullivan, 5002 C Word Court in Southport. Sheriff 4th, Commissioners, thanks for letting me speak. Where do I begin? I needed to reschedule my cardiologist today. I got an appointment in January, I think that's, I'm pretty lucky for that, but that'll be two years since I saw my cardiologist. There is a shortage of doctors, medical facilities, and emergency services in Brunswick County. What are the commissioners doing to remedy that? Are you working with residents, medical facilities, and municipalities? This same concern has been listed over and over for 50 years. Is it a good thing to be the fastest-growing county in the state? No. Is it a good thing to be the fourth fastest-growing state in the country? No, not if you can't maintain the infrastructure to keep up with the growth. I am a transplant. I grew up in the San Francisco Bay Area of California. I moved away after 35 years. I could never go back and live there. It's way too overdeveloped, and there's no sense of community. After California, my husband and I moved to Indiana, Minnesota, Texas, New Jersey, and finally, North Carolina to retire. We have family here. We have been vacationing here for 15 years prior to buying our home nine years ago. Of all the places we have lived, Indiana felt the safest. Its ruralness, agricultural land, and low-key way of life was comforting. Texas was too hot, Minnesota was too cold. New Jersey was beautiful, we lived beautiful, we lived in the mountains. The development dashboard is a great tool. It shows what developments have been approved, built out, and not built. Maybe somebody can do the math and tell us each month the total number of expected homes, and use that as a tool when reviewing each new application. Put a limit on the percentage of growth. We understand growth is inevitable, but controlled growth would be more acceptable and better managed. Has anybody studied the crash data? That's out there too, it's gone up. How does the Commissioner's strategic plan better Brunswick County residents? A couple of decades ago, the residents were number one. So the developers are taking over residential, and BBID is promoting industrial sites to bring companies and jobs here. Are they aware of the low wages here, the overcrowded schools, the inadequate medical services? I'm tired, I really don't enjoy it here anymore. Many others feel the same. Thank you.
Jody Andrusak?
For hearing me tonight, name's Judy Andrusak, 5886 Curtis Court, Ocean Isle. Yesterday in Leland, an enormous clear-cut debris blaze made by a developer could have caused a major disaster.
Ms. Andrusak, I'm sorry, can you pull the mic closer? Barely hear you.
Yesterday in Leland, an enormous clear-cut debris could have caused a major fire disaster. Insanely close to 17, it could have gotten out of hand and endangered many. This kind of reckless burn is a direct threat to the health, well-being, and safety of every person in Brunswick County. Residents are required to have burn permits, refined, jailed, or both for violating processes. Developers are issued burn permits by the state, and they're required to be knowledgeable about all state, local, and forestry rules governing burns. We've complained in the past about piles of debris smoldering for days due to lack of removal of dirt, causing slow burns. There have been unattended burns over weekends with no personnel monitoring them, or water sources close by to douse the flames should they get out of hand. In the past, it's been noted that Brunswick is mostly retirees. Some are Korean vets, many more are vets from Vietnam, Iraq, Iran, Afghanistan, and have diseases from Agent Orange and burn pits. These diseases and other conditions are exacerbated by prolonged and continuous burns. Everything from lung cancer, TB, whooping cough, aspergillus, bronchiectasis, vaping, allergies, COPD, pseudomotis originosa, interstitial disease, and pulmonary hypertension. People with underlying cardiac issues could expect heart attacks, stroke, and sudden cardiac arrest for breathing in smoke particulates. It should also be noted that many of the trees being cut and burned poison ivy, oak, and sumac growing on them. Are you aware that breathing, burning poison ivy, oak, or sumac oil can trigger extreme respiratory issues from the urishal oil? And can cause even fatality in addition to severe respiratory distress? We've asked in the past to have this issue addressed, but as usual, nothing's been done. While there's no blanket burn ban in North Carolina, other North Carolina cities and towns have enacted them in the interest of public safety. Wilmington is one of those. This needs to be placed not on the back burner again, but in the forefront. Because promises to do this and not getting anything done, it's way past the time for that. You are putting everyone at risk, including yourselves. All right, it's time for action and replacement. Do I need to say more? Thank you.
Arthur Stevens?
My name is Arthur Stevens. My home resides at 3834 Marie Kingsway, that's on North Marlborough, in the Marlborough, uh, Marlborough, uh, North Marlborough Community. Good afternoon, everyone. I thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. I thank the commissioners for taking interest in this serious problem that we are having in our older neighborhoods like Marlborough Road and surrounding areas. Why I care? Our ancestors have been asking for clean water for over 20 years. Many of them have passed and gone on in the fight for clean water. It's time for a change. Even with the filtration filter system on our water, that doesn't help. The use of our well water, washing our white clothes and light-colored clothes in this rusty, stinking water stains and makes our clothes smell. Drinking water is bad for our health. I've had surgery two times for kidney stones, the rust in the water was not good for me. Please take action. We are asking the commissioners to look into this bad water problem for everyone who doesn't have clean water. And in my closing, we see how wealthy and fast-growing Brunswick County is becoming. We've lost family and loved ones that have worked and raised families and paid taxes in Brunswick County. They did not get a chance to see or have clean water. Now, new developments and communities are being given free and clean water immediately. Some of our elder families are having to cut back on medication to buy drinking water. Clean water is a human right, and everyone should have it. I thank you for giving me this time to speak.
Herman Berry? Herman Berry? Last call, Herman Berry. Okay, guess he left. I have no idea. Larry Smith, it's Larry and, I can't read that. Larry and somebody Smith? Did they sign up for the wrong thing? Okay, guess they left. Melissa Bates. Melissa Bates?
It was the same issue. Thank you. It was a water issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Tammy Stanley?
Same thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ada Rosebauer?
Same thing.
You made that quick and easy. Thank you all. Okay. Moving on, that concludes public comments. Not really, but what do you have? Ah, come on up. Make sure you state your name and address, please.
My name is Haley McFarland, and I live at twelve seventy-six Cherry Tree Northeast in Winnebago. Brunswick County doesn't need more housing. However, there are many things we do need. We need more schools, more doctor's offices, more hospitals, more improvements to current roads, more plans to protect houses and residents from flooding, more mental health providers, more parks and recreation spots, more emergency responders. The list goes on forever. At the last planning, at the last planning board meeting, your board made it very clear that they felt their hands are tied if developers meet grossly bare minimum requirements. However, all of these reasons I just listed are direct threats to public health and safety, which is the main reason to deny any development application. Yet time and time again, our pleased citizens are falling on deaf ears and proposals are being approved due to, due to fear of legal repercussions. Personally, I would rather my taxes go towards lawsuits protecting the county for denying proposals than have our standard of living continue to go down while our cost of living continues to go up. So please, listen to your citizens and make the decisions needed to maintain things we value here in Brunswick County. Farms, wildlife, trees, wetlands, and history. The current UDOs list many reasons past developments should not have been approved. But you can, your, your commissioners have created an air of fear over your board members. They're scared to deny, so these developers continue to come down to good old Brunswick County and walk all over you and consequentially all over us. We can't continue growing in population while failing to provide for current citizens. When residents are unable to access basic needs like mental health care, you end up with heartbreaking outcomes as witnessed in the recent Southport shooting. The last census shows there are over fourteen thousand veterans in Brunswick County. Are we meeting their needs? If you keep on approving, you might as well replace all of these pictures on the walls with ones that are more appropriate. Maybe the Walmart shopping center during rush hour. Some candid pictures of all the unfinished construction sites. Pictures of elderly citizens stuck in their homes as stormwater rises and emergency personnel are too overloaded to respond. Because that's the Brunswick County you are creating. Our logo on the wall, right there, shows rolling fields, sunshine, and clean waters. If we want to represent ourselves in an honest light to all of these new home buyers, I suggest the logo be revised to show apartments, polluted waters, and traffic. Stop neglecting our locals, our elderly, our veterans. Start representing us. Section three point three point three, part seven of the UDO notes that one requirement for any planned development is to quote, "protect scenic views." Yet the only scenic views these development bring are concretes, houses, and traffic. We are going from views of beautiful forests to views of houses and roads in our backyards. We need a temporary moratorium on all new developments until our county addresses these health and safety concerns. Commissioners, do better. Protect the people and the county as you swore to do. Thank you.
All right, we move on to the consent agenda. Remember, we took out number eight. You'll have a motion for approval.
Make a motion, please.
Second.
Thompson Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. All right, move on. Please excuse me. Uh, move on to the public hearing. Uh, Mr. Lockamy? You coming up?
Yeah, you got to go to presentations.
Mr. Lockamy, go sit down again.
Operator error up here.
How did I miss that entire section? And there's a lot of it.
There's a lot of it.
Get comfortable. We're about to get beat up by slideshows for a while. Ms. Litch?
Good evening, Commissioner. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm going to try to make this brief. I just wanted an opportunity to provide you with a, um, an overview of the Medicaid, uh, fee reductions as well as the possible impacts of the federal government shutdown. And so, better? Okay. The fee reductions, all of this is subject to change depending on, the legislator could make some, some changes. But in a quick overview of the Medicaid fee reduction, because of the shortfall with the Medicaid budget, there is a three percent fee cut, or rate cut for all of the Medicaid services. How that impacts Brunswick County? There'll be an impact to our revenue. It's roughly just a little bit over a hundred and, a hundred thousand dollars. Our health clinics will receive about thirty-five thousand dollars less. Their healthcare management program will be impacted by about twenty thousand. Our ambulance fee services, about forty-five. And then the DSS, non-emergency transportation, is thirteen thousand dollars over the course of the rest of this fiscal year. Those are the anticipated impacts of that. If the legislator finds some funding and they decide to restore the fees, then obviously we would have this impact. But this is what we're looking at right now. That was the easy part. The federal shutdown, as we're all aware, that Congress was unable to pass an appropriations bill and the operations of federal government stopped December, I mean October first. The shutdown impacts not just the county revenue that we receive for our services, but also benefits to our citizens. There are several programs that are impacted, both fiscally as well as program-wise. The first one is EMS, our ambulance services. Medicare, um, Congress had passed for a Medicare ambulance add-on payments. It's two or three percent depending on the zip code of where we're responding to. In addition to that's added on. Our billing company is going ahead and filing, um, they were holding initially hoping that shutdown would resolve itself. It hasn't, so they will go back and once the government opens back up again, they will go back and file for those, the two or three percent additional fees on those Medicare rates. Uh, the Health WIC clinic, there is a fiscal impact with that as well as a program impact. The, um, WIC is about seventy-five percent federally funded. And the, if we, we average out, it's about sixty-one thousand dollars of delayed revenue that we receive for the program staff. The benefits for our participants, should they, should the government not find a way to fund this program into November? It's about, have my notes here. Sixty-one thousand dollars just in WIC benefits. And WIC provides, um, food supplements as well as formula for young children ages zero to five. The food stamp program, food nutrition, there is about seventy-one, um, hundred households who receive food stamp benefits in Brunswick County. The November allotment amount issued in Brunswick County, and they're issued on the, the third, the fifth, the seventh, the ninth, all the way through the twenty-first, is just shy of two point four million dollars for Brunswick County. And so as of right now, what we know, the state will not be able to issue the November benefits. The childcare subsidy, when I created this slide, um, for the presentation, it, we were uncertain as to whether or not childcare subsidy would be impacted in November. The state has told us that they have the funding for childcare. There's only a small portion that's impacted by the lack of the, um, by the current budgets that are up for discussion right now at the federal level. The work first program, um, there is a fiscal, a staff piece of that as well as a benefit piece. The benefits that go out to those participants is, uh, twelve thousand dollars for the month of November. And it's about fifty-eight families that receive, um, that, that receive that assistance. And so as of what we know today, if something isn't resolved or the state is unable to find that funding, those individuals will not receive those benefits in November. And I'm prefacing this all on, this is what we know today. The state is doing everything they can to look and find money and move, you know, what money is available and what they can move around to issue benefits. Our last call with them, the state pretty much said if we, they're trying not to piecemeal so that they can keep programs whole. That's what they're, they're trying to do. Um, the low-income energy assistance program, LEAP, that, um, what they're going to focus on right now that is focusing, there's two rolls out, two rollouts of this program. The first one is in December where they issue, um, the elderly as well as the disabled to receiving services through Division of Aging and Adult Services. There's auto payments, and so those auto payments will be issued. The LEAP program provides energy assistance to help offset the winter heating costs for eligible families. They will roll that out. If there's not sufficient funding and this isn't resolved by January, when it opens back up to the general public, they will not be funding for that. Um, the other big piece of how this is going to impact, um, the county is the fiscal impact. So our, all of our revenues that we receive from, um, the federal government will be delayed. And so for DSS, it's about, when I average it all out, it's up close to nine hundred thousand dollars that if it's not resolved come November fifteenth, when Aaron's looking for some money, that will not arrive. Any questions so far?
I think I want a quick one. What are we, day sixteen or seventeen of this shutdown, something, that effect, whatever it is? Sooner or later, they're going to go back to work, you would hope.
Yes.
Every, we'll, we'll call it November first, they go back, just to pick a date. Will all this money then come, or will we be beat?
So, in the past, all of that money has then, um, you know, once they pass the bills and they, they're, um, then that money does come through and the federal employees that were laid off will get paid. And that, um, these things, this is a little bit different. It, we, you know, I'd like to say that yes, if, you know, these benefits, um, that all these, this money would then come back, we should get our staff reimbursement, but it depends on what they decide to do, really.
I agree.
I wish I had that crystal ball.
No, I get it. Thank you.
That was the quick, that was the quick two-minute version of how this is, um, we anticipate this impacting us over the next couple of weeks.
Certainly nothing good. Anybody have a question?
One question. It's not as much about the shutdown impacts, but back when you were talking about the EMS and ambulance services, that I understand you said that the reimbursement amount varies depending upon the zip code being responded.
That is the Medicare. So here, there's the Medicare rate, and I tried to find it and, um, like, I probably just missed the one email that had it. And then there's an additional two or three percent additional that we get for that. And it depends on if it's considered an urban, urban area or a rural area. Bolivia, Southport, and Oak Island get the three percent. They're considered rural. And all the other zip code areas are considered urban and get the additional two percent to the Medicare rate.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, I would just ask that you come back to us, uh, if, if the issue, even, even if the, uh, even if the federal government goes back to work, I would, uh, I would still be concerned with them making adjustments to some of the programs. Uh, the, uh, low-income energy program. Uh, I, I would appreciate it if, uh, you would come back to us if it looks like that's going to be a program that's in jeopardy.
Okay.
Some of our folks not having heat this winter, so appreciate that.
Will do.
I do know that North Carolina, the legislators are looking at what they can do to fund some of this. I don't know the federal side or just the state side, but they are working up a plan. So hopefully they'll come up with something.
The, um, the first wave of individuals that will be impacted by the possibility of not receiving food stamps will be November third. And, um, it's about three hundred, a little over three hundred thousand dollars that hits that. And then on the, um, the fifth, it's another allotment goes out and it's, and they're all, and they average out to be about two hundred and twenty-five, but it adds up to the two point four million.
Any other question? Thank you, Kathy, as always. Appreciate you. All right. Mr. Manager, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we have here requests from the board that the board receive a presentation from Brunswick County Schools on projects, timing, and the amount of funding needed in association with the general obligation bond. The request is that the Board of Commissioners consider adopting the required resolutions to issue three hundred and forty-nine point six million in school general obligation bonds proposed for constructing, improving, and renovating school facilities, directing the publication of notice of intention to apply to the local government commission for approval of bonds, authorizing the finance director to apply and submit to the local government commission for approval of the proposed general obligation bond financing, and make certain statements of fact concerning the proposed bond issue. The Board of Education has requested that the Board of Commissioners place the issue of a three hundred and forty-nine point six million dollar bond referendum to meet school capital needs on the March third, two oh two six ballot. They will present their initiatives and capital needs tonight in support of that request.
Mr. Cole? Superintendent Cole, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, Mr. Forte. Thank you for having me. And, uh, I wanted to thank your team at the county level. They have been working closely with us since the last time we came and presented. Uh, as a, as a team, I really appreciate the time and effort that they have put in with us um, in working on the changes. We listened to your feedback last time and we've made quite a few adjustments uh, to try to meet what we heard from individual board members, uh, at that last meeting. And I think you'll see that reflected in the presentation tonight as well as in the bond list and numbers. Um, so just, uh, as an overview, again, this is just a picture of our last edition at North Brunswick High School at the opening. Uh, I did see some questions after our presentation last time relative to new development. And of course, um, that was brought up during public comment tonight. I did just want to point out that our bond referendum is based on, um, current developments and, uh, those that have already been approved by the planning committee. In other words, if development completely stopped in Brunswick County tomorrow, it would not impact our needs that we are asking for in this bond. Uh, all of this comes from what has already been started or approved to be started, um, at a later date. So I didn't want to make that clear. Um, just some key points. Our message is building new schools now is critical to address uh, student growth and capacity demands at our schools. Uh, in the next two years, for example, we're projected to be serving, uh, up to three hundred and twenty elementary students in modular classrooms just in the north region alone at Town Creek Elementary, Belleville Elementary, and Lincoln Elementary. Um, failing to pass the bond, uh, next year could result in an additional also twenty-one point three million just due to construction inflation, which is currently estimated at three percent per year right now. We've used a targeted approach in that we use annual demographic studies and the reports that are generated by those studies uh, and capacity studies to place new schools where they relieve the most pressure on our, uh, capacity at our schools. This bond delivers elementary school, uh, and elementary school and a new high school to balance attendance zones and restore a healthy capacity buffer, which we typically consider to be about ninety percent capacity. We try to keep, keep, keep our schools at ninety percent or below just because when we get above ninety percent, uh, we start getting concerned because of a large influx in one year could put us over capacity without us being able to plan for it. Uh, just in demographics, growth in the Leland area is outpacing available seats. Without new capacity, multiple campuses will run at or above capacity for years, even with modulars. Uh, so the bond will add the seats we need where our families live. And as I shared in my previous presentation, uh, it's not just about the seats. It's also about being able to serve lunches, uh, in a safe and efficient way because we're outpacing the numbers that our lunchrooms were designed for. Particularly in the north region and North Brunswick High School. And then as well as traffic. Uh, our current locations were not designed, uh, with schools in my- Our current locations were not designed with schools in mind that had as many students as we have now or that we're projected to have over the next ten years. So as a result, we start developing a whole lot of traffic issues that are really outside of our control as these schools are allowed to grow. But specific to seats, we have been handling that through modular classrooms and adding those, but there's a cost to that. Modular's weakened safety. They sit outside the main building with more exterior doors and longer walks between classes. Students face weather exposure during heat, cold, and storms. Permanent classrooms inside the building keep students within secure access points and full supervision. Students also feel they belong when they learn inside of the actual building. They're closer to the teachers, services, labs, media centers, and the other activities. Being in the building strengthens relationships, it improves focus, and it builds a single school community. These are some pictures just of the modulars at Belleville. We currently have nine modulars at Belleville Elementary School. We are in the process of adding two for next year and two for the year after that. So two years from now, we would have thirteen modular classrooms at Belleville Elementary School. These are modulars at Lincoln Elementary School. We also are in the process of adding two modulars at Lincoln next year and two more the year after. That will put us at eight modulars, I believe, at Lincoln Elementary School. And our demographic projections show us that we're going to have to continue to add modulars after those years as well. We currently have two elementary modulars at Town Creek Elementary School, and those are pictured. So just specific to growth data, I wanted to explain these charts, they're all organized the same way. So on the left vertical column, you have the number of students, and across the bottom, you have the school years. The red lines with the dots, that shows the projected number of students at each of these schools without adding a new elementary school. The yellow line shows ninety percent capacity at Belleville, this slide in particular. The red line shows a hundred percent capacity, and the broken red line shows the capacity with modulars. As the line, as the dotted line turns to green, you'll see that it drops down to the ninety percent capacity. That's when we add a new elementary school, which would be funded by a bond referendum. Right now, we are hoping for twenty twenty-eight. So as you can see, it would make quite a difference in the Belleville building capacity projection. This slide shows the same information for Lincoln Elementary School. And this is for Town Creek Elementary School. And this is the north region elementary capacity numbers overall, with all, all three elementary schools together. Without a new elementary school, you can see that we passed the point of being able to cover everyone with our modulars and buildings in twenty twenty-nine. And this is the projections with a new, one new elementary school in the north region. So that would cover our needs until twenty thirty, twenty thirty-four with modulars. Without modulars, we cross over somewhere between twenty thirty-one and twenty thirty-two. So specific to high schools, this is same organization for North Brunswick High School with the teal line dots being with a new high school opening in twenty thirty-one. This is South Brunswick High School. This is West Brunswick High School. And this is just overall high school building capacity across the district without a new high school. This is with a new high school. This is just a slide that I shared before. On the left, it shows the current elementary school attendance zones, and then it zooms in on the north region on the right. The purpose of this slide is just show where the properties are that the board is currently in negotiations with to buy for future schools. It shows the location of Lincoln, Belleville, and Town Creek. And then it shows the Jacke's Creek location, which is where we would build our first elementary school. And then on the left, it shows seven states north and seven states south, which are two properties that we're looking at to meet the needs in that area of the county as they grow. And if you ride through those areas, especially around that seven states north side, there is a huge amount of development going on in that area. So now we'll move into countywide upgrades, upgrades. Ninety-three percent of this school bond referendum goes to the cost to buy the land, design, and build two schools. One elementary school and one high school. So that's ninety-three percent. The rest of the bond will go towards these items. We wanted to replace the old wooden bleachers at, I think it's three of our middle schools and then at our, at our high schools. These are bleacher systems that were original to these schools. They are very worn out. They require a lot of work to keep them working properly, and even when they are, it, it's pretty hard for older folks to climb those bleachers. A lot of the handrails are very loose due to the bolts being sort of walled out over time. A lot of broken brackets happen, so they, they are a constant source of work. As well as the footboards are kind of falling apart at this point, and we're having to replace them with plywood. So this is Shalote Middle Indoor Bleachers. This is Leland Middle Indoor Bleachers. South Brunswick Middle. North Brunswick. South Brunswick. West Brunswick. Next is the extension, the Governor's Road at the Town Creek Complex. This addresses some critical safety needs for us. It addresses safety and emergency access to the Town Creek site, which is also a shelter. We saw in, in the unnamed storm number eight, Highway seventeen was, was cut in half right there. Anyone north of that area was unable to access the Rice Parkway to get to the complex. Had we had had another access point off of Governor's Road, it would have been a lot more useful to the citizens during the storm. Access is limited to this area due to a single entry and exit point. A second connection obviously would solve that. It would also create a lot more capacity for buses and family traffic. It would shorten queues and prevent backups on the Highway seventeen. This is one of the complexes that, you know, obviously we get a lot of complaints about because at the elementary school, traffic gets backed up on the seventeen. And we have changed some things. We are now having our fourth and fifth grade students at Town Creek Elementary be picked up actually at the middle school to try to create some more queuing to get people off of Highway seventeen. But as Town Creek continues to grow, that's not going to help anymore. So we feel like this is a critical need for us. The gold line marks where approximately we would build the road and then cut across. We have an easement already to access Governor's Road from that point. It's approximately zero point six three miles is what we would be building. Shalote Middle, the multipurpose field or, or, or football field there. This is a unique situation in the district. It's the one football field that is used by everyone. They don't have an extra field, and we're having a difficult time keeping grass on that field as a result, especially since we added lacrosse. There's a high volume of sports played on this field. And we believe this upgrade would create a dedicated community space while preserving the field's active use for school sports. And as long as our sports team sort of got priority times when they needed it for practice and games, it could be used by the community. And in the long run, it would be a lot cheaper than having to re-turf that field constantly. Just some pictures, like some close-ups, you can see, you know, sort of from a distance, it looks green, but when you stand over it, that's what it looks like. There's not a lot of grass holding in place. South Brunswick Softball Field House. It currently, South Brunswick High School softball team lacks the facilities that other teams in our district have. The existing field house is, is, it doesn't provide, I don't think, sufficient amenities for the public. For example, the bathroom that is used by female spectators at games only has one toilet. We have had to address that by bringing in a trailer modular that has multiple bathrooms, but that costs us just short of twenty thousand a year to do that. Also, our softball players actually change clothes in a bathroom in the high school because they don't have a locker room space. We believe that a new field house that includes lockers for the softball team, better public bathrooms, a concession stand would optimize the space for both school and community use, and it would bring it up to par with what west and north have. Just some more pictures. So, just bond projects, the total is three hundred and forty-nine million, six hundred thousand dollars is where we are right now. On the left, in the north region, just those four bullets, those first four bullets, those first four bullets, that is what, that's ninety-three percent of the bond referendum. And then we added in the Governor's Road extension because that is in the north, what we consider to be the north region of the county. And on the right, you have the countywide upgrades. So replacing all of our intercoms in all of our schools, as I've spoken before, we're having a tough time with that. We have quite a few different ones that have been added over the years, and they are all very old. We want to upgrade to an IP address, more cloud-based system for intercoms, that is the modern norm. The indoor bleachers for one point oh three million. The Shalote Middle Multipurpose Turf Field, one point three million. The softball field house at South Brunswick, one point eight two million. And then we have a bullet for future site development of ten point four six million. Because we believe it's in the best interest of the taxpayer for us to go ahead and begin buying land in areas that our demographic studies are showing us that we're going to need to build schools in the next twenty years. Land will never be as cheap as it is right now in these areas. If we wait, it's going to be quite a bit more expensive to be able to buy them. And if we can buy these sites, we can also begin to develop those sites so that we'll be further along down the road when other schools need to be built to handle the growth that is coming to Brunswick County. So as far as a marketing campaign, we have a little over, i- if it were approved tonight, we could get started tomorrow. We have a list of a hundred and thirty different organizations that we plan to request to get on a meeting for them to be able to present our bond presentation and ask for their written and signed support. We have identified twenty-nine of those as being prioritized organizations. For example, all of the town municipality boards, Duke Energy, all of the chambers, United Way. There, there are a lot on that list that we would want to get busy on right off the bat. But in month one, we want to engage our key stakeholders by reaching out to those largest organizations for presentations and to secure letters of support, conduct all hands-on-deck meetings at every school to inform and mobilize volunteers to promote the bond initiative, and deploy volunteers to public events with tables and flyers to raise awareness and give people the facts. Month two, we want to continue into educating and informing by hosting bond information nights at our schools to engage the public and showcase the impact that a bond would have on education and the community. Continue those presentations, working down our list of Brunswick organizations and continuing to secure letters of support and sustaining that volunteer presence at public events. And month three, engage key stakeholders. As we continue to work down that list, we will start getting to churches and additional civic groups to deliver presentations and build grassroots support. Continue hosting bond information nights and continuing to, to sustain the volunteer presence at all public events. So just in conclusion, Brunswick County schools exist to serve our community and prepare future leaders. And this bond will add the seats that we need in the north region, ensuring that students learn in secure classrooms, including a Governor's Road extension for safer, smoother access. It also reduces reliance on modular units that are not safe, aligns capacity with our growing enrollment, and delivers a new elementary school hopefully in twenty twenty-eight and a new high school in twenty thirty-one, with all remaining upgrades completed as soon as we can complete them, but definitely by the end in twenty thirty-one. And I, I feel like I represent the Board of Education when I say we can build a Brunswick-built future for every student in every town in this district. And we hope that the Board of Commissioners will join us in that. Thank you.
All right. Questions for Superintendent Cole? Any questions?
Yeah, I'll jump in first. I did, I have two questions. You mentioned the, the softball field house.
Yes, sir.
And then you referenced West. Now, how did, how did the county pay for West Field House?
West, West has been there a long time. Their locker rooms are adjacent to the field dugouts. They have aggressive ones behind, building for the, the girls softball as a boy's baseball. And they've been there since I've been here, it's been almost two years. Nor, we recently, we did, during the last bond, we did athletic projects, and we had a new softball press box and concession stand built behind the door, that was the last bond thing. And we also put a locker room behind the first base side dugout for the, the girls softball. So they have new facilities that door from the last one.
Okay. Okay, I, I just, I didn't know what the reference was for West with it being twenty years old, so that's, that's my only.
I, I would have to research that.
That, that's close. My, my next question is, I missed the slide on what the impact is to the property owners of Brunswick County. So what kind of tax rate increase are we looking at for, for this particular request?
Well, we're waiting for him to get the figure. The modulars, how bad is it for the internet or anything else that, that you use in that building separate from being inside the, the school itself? I know when I was at the middle school, the modulars, we had issues continuously with internet and all that stuff to be able to, to. I don't know how much trouble you're having today with internet with them being a trailer.
If actually put any place where a signal can be reached and a hard line is put underground, I believe, that accesses the modular. And currently right now, we do not have issues with that. We make sure that they have power suppression technology, support everything that you have.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, my, I have not heard any complaints about internet access with the modulars.
So the three hundred and forty-nine point six million, based on the current phases that they've shared with me, would result in ultimately three property tax increases, the first one being two point two five nine.
And what year would that come?
If we, probably twenty twenty-eight.
Okay.
I'm sorry, twenty twenty-seven.
Twenty, twenty-seven.
Year twenty twenty-seven.
Okay.
The second one, two years later, would be three point four two nine.
And that would be in twenty twenty-nine.
Mm-hmm. The, the bond sale would actually happen a year early. The, the bond sale would actually happen a year earlier, but you would have the tax increase whenever our first payments began, which would technically be the next budget year. And then the last phase is point 047.
I'm sorry, point, point 01?
Point 047, yes.
And that would be in 2031?
Mm hmm.
And you're saying that the, the actual impact would be.
Total is 5.74.
I'm sorry.
The total for all three is 5.74.
Okay.
And you get the benefit of the amortization each year. So whatever you issue in the first year, you've got a couple of years for it to amortize. So you're not having to realize the full impact of the tax. But that's, this includes that in the numbers I gave you.
Okay. Okay, I'm good. So a total out of the amount would be 5.74.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I appreciate the slide on the promotional plans. Have you, and obviously you guys can educate, but you can't necessarily advocate. Have you heard of anyone out there who's planning on a more advocacy oriented campaign to actually run a, and like an advertising campaign promoting this beyond what you guys can do?
Well, right now, that is, the 29 organizations that we're starting with, we're certainly going to be recruiting them to speak out in favor of it. We have a document that once we present, we'll ask them to vote on whether or not they support the bond or not and sign off on it. We would then use the name of their organization as being in support of that bond.
Any other questions?
Well, I do, I, I've got a couple of them. You've done a very thorough job. I like your PowerPoint, what you've done. I'm a little concerned there's not a consultant embedded in this. And usually when we have something with this volume, there usually is a consultant in it. The other thing is, my understanding is hardening has been taken out of it. There's no shelters in the north end. However, we pay for it, I'm concerned about the jeopardy of students. Should we have a tornado or some other kind of issue plus sheltering? You brought that up with respect to Town Creek about, you know, how that is being used as shelter. I went there when we had potential tropical cyclone eight, and yeah, it was flooded. But, and so was the road, the road was in, in bad shape near there in 717. But point is, I'd like to see the hardening put back in there. And those are the main things that I'm, I'm concerned about.
Pat?
If he's concerned about the hardening of the building to be a emergency shelter, whatever, then I think the county needs to come up with that money for the hardening if we want to add it into the new school contract.
I agree with you. Not their responsibility, it's ours. Any other questions? I know I have a comment over here, but any other questions?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, first of all, I appreciate all the work you guys put into this, you and your board. And I think it's, you know, we're, I think we're getting there. I think that, you know, I appreciate the, the feedback you've given us on this. And I think that we've got two boards that are both very passionate and very committed. My only concern is I still have concerns about the primary timing, putting it on the primary ballot. I am absolutely supportive of putting a bond on the ballot. You know, I work in the communication industry and I've called a lot of my friends and colleagues around the state who have run bond campaigns. And basically every single one of them says, put it on the general, not the primary. And so that's my main concern is if we're going to put it on there, I want it to pass, you know? It, you know, we can't afford to put it on there. And, you know, me being, being in the PR industry, if I were gonna, this is a four month window till early voting, and that's, seems like a lot, but it's not. It's, to me, it would, I would be charging a rush fee if I took on a campaign of this magnitude with a four month ramp up window till early voting, just because of the time. So that is my main concern and, you know, it's just the timing of it. If we're going to put it on the ballot, we need to make sure we have time. And grassroots is a great way, and I think you've got a great grassroots plan, but I don't know that that will reach the volume of people that we need to reach. I think there's got to be, and this is not something you can do. This is something that we could do at an educational perspective, but there needs to be some organization out there. And I've heard some who are interested who could do the more of an advocacy campaign. But they also say that they don't think four months is enough time to do it. They would prefer the general.
Any others? Cause I have a point or two. Superintendent, you know that I am pro education more than anybody. I have served at Brunswick Community College since 2009. And I am pro education. I am a firm, firm believer that good schools make good communities. It makes for safe communities. It raises property values. You know, good schools rise, raise the ship. Everything goes with it. Our students are better off, as parents, we're better off because we have better students. I, I am absolutely pro education and I am pro this bond. I, I, I think this is necessary. Nobody wants a tax increase. I, I get that. I, I don't want, I own multiple homes, so you know, I, I'll get hit triple. But it's necessary. Not that our schools are growing at this massive pace, we're basically a retirement community, but we are growing. The schools are growing. So I, I think we really don't have a choice. And if there's no other questions, I'll make a motion that we approve this bond at 349.6 million dollars, but with the caveat that it goes on the general election, not the primary. I think you need that 10 month period to properly promote this, to convince the 175,000, well, 125,000, 130,000 voters that this is necessary. It, it's going to be a very difficult education campaign. And I don't see any way you could do it when early voting starts mid February.
February 12th.
Yeah, all right, there you go. Thank you. February 12th.
Can, can I ask you to amend the motion before?
I will not amend.
Well, this is what I would just hear me out. Could you have a motion to approve that the bond moved forward? And then a motion separate for the time period? Cause I, I think it needs to be the primary and I don't want to vote against the bond.
Go ahead.
I was gonna, I, I had a motion I was gonna make that's slightly different than either of the ones we just heard. Mine was gonna be, agree to put the ref, the bond on the general election ballot, pencil in the amount, but finalize it in a resolution in late spring, but begin the public engagement phase immediately to get feedback and see if there's anything we need to tweak based on the feedback. That would go ahead and move forward, but then we can pass the resolutions in a couple of months. And there might be something you want to tweak based on what we hear from the public. So that was going to be my hybrid version of it.
I kind of like that one.
Where you got down that end?
I was, I was concerned with the extra cost it's going to cost us by holding off, but 21 million?
That would be for two years.
For two years. Go ahead.
You know, I came in this evening open minded about this. Keeping in mind that when, when, when I was the chair and Commissioner Ford Tavas' vice chair, we met with the school system several years ago, talking about the same subject and trying to move it forward at that particular time. So there, there, there has been a delay. I, I have no idea why there was a delay, but there was. I remember sitting in your office while you were here, having that discussion. So it's, but one thing that Commissioner Williams brought up that i- is interesting, that may give you an opportunity to, to relook at things. You know, during our last bond, the, the early college was in the last bond, a facility or a building for the early college. And during the, the process of reevaluating the needs for the public school system, that money was diverted. The same thing could happen this time around in a short term between now and whenever we get into, to the March, May, June timeframe. That may give you an opportunity to readjust some of your numbers a- as Commissioner Williams was referencing. And that, if we didn't have the, the history and the track record of needing to change because money needed to be allocated differently because of the situation changing. And I, I am a firm believer that our community is changing every day. I can, I can only imagine that the school system is, is changing every day. And so having that opportunity to say, yes, we're going to do a bond and we'll go ahead and say, it's going to be at least this much money. But how the money is allocated at this particular time, giving you flexibility until we get locked into that. If we're able to do that, I haven't heard from, from the attorney if Commissioner Williams process is a correct one or not. But I, I just throw that out that you may want to give yourself an opportunity to, to reflect on what your request is in a month or two.
Mr. Attorney?
And I'd also like to know if it'd be permissible to do as Commissioner Sykes requested and vote on the timing in a separate motion.
Sorry. I was told earlier today that we could not pass this without a figure. Is that incorrect?
For the primary?
349.6.
Aaron will need the final figure six months prior to being on the ballot. Because on the ballot, we're going to have to have a firm number and calculate appropriate calculations and resolutions. So six months prior to the primary, or sorry, general election.
Yeah, this, we were, I think the understanding was it was on the primary, but I did too. That's the way I understood it. But now talking later, we understood it did not, it could be open if it's going to go in the general.
It can be open tonight.
Yeah.
But by May, it's going to need to be final.
So, so I don't, so we don't end up in litigation? We can, we could say, yes, we're going to do this, but without a figure?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying.
Well, you can't approve the, the resolution that's part of this. The resolution has to have a specific number. So if you say you approve the concept, you're not approving the resolution. You would do the resolution in April or May or, or sometime in, in the spring. So you would just be saying, yes, we, we support something that looks like this. But you would not, this specific revol- resolution has to be worded as it is and have an exact amount in it.
That gives you the flexibility. So because time's not.
Did that answer your question?
Oh, yeah. Did it answer? Yeah, that's, that's what I thought was if you're going to vote on the resolution, you've got to vote on it after it.
But we don't have to vote on it. My motion was going to be to agree in principle and then defer the resolution.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're basically saying yes.
No, basically, we have three different resolu- uh. Okay.
There's still a motion on the.
None of them were seconded.
I will rescind, I will rescind my motion. Go ahead.
And before I make mine, is there, I don't know that there's a way to make the motion I want to make without specifying the time. I wanted to give Commissioner Sykes, but, because she does support the bond. But I don't know that I can defer the resolution without specifying a time because we're going to put it on, put it on the primary, we'd have to do it tonight. We're not going to do that, so I don't.
Well, I, I just feel like that we needed on the primary because that's what the Board of Education voted on and requested us do. Since they are elected board, I felt like we should uphold their vote as, you know, they have a part in this too.
What if we did this? What if we voted on when it's going to be first? Then we do our motion on whatever it is you just said or how we're going to do it. Because then that way we can have clarity as to when it's going to be on the ballot. That'll be behind us. Then we can move forward with how it's going to be on the ballot or how we're going to proceed with it.
I will go ahead and make the motion that I intended to make and see if it gets a second of them. My motion is that we agree to put a bond referendum on the general election ballot, that we use the framework presented as a tentative amount that's penciled in to be finalized when the resolution is adopted in late spring and that we begin public engagement immediately and incorporate any feedback received into the final resolution.
I'll second that motion. I had to mull that for a second.
Well, I can't, I can't support that motion, but so it, it also takes my vote away for the whole package, so.
The vote on the whole, on the specific, the whole package.
Well, you're saying for the general, so you're, you're still, I'm, I'm for the school bond. So, you know, we just need to vote on the bond and then vote on the time separate, I think.
That's what I'm saying, if you do the, if you don't do the time first, we get that out of the way. And then the second thing we do is vote on what you just had without it being on the general. When we, we will carry it forward from however that vote comes out.
If you're not doing it, you have to do the bond contract first, otherwise there's nothing to time.
All right.
Yeah.
All right.
Is everybody clear on the intent of my motion? I mean, I know.
I am, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so it could, it could actually go up or down depending upon what.
Yeah, we're using it as a penciling in the amount, but we might get feedback on something that we absolutely have to have that we haven't thought about.
Yeah, you thought about.
Get feedback taken, I mean, you know, but this gives us, this is a framework and we, clear that we're moving forward, but we're moving forward.
So restate your motion.
That we agree to put the bond on the general election ballot.
See, there you go, saying general election.
I know, I was trying to find a way to do it without that, but and pencil in this amount to be final, that based on this framework, we'll finalize it with adoption of the resolution in late spring, at which point then we'll have the actual language and begin public engagement immediately.
Well, I've had to vote for things that I voted against, even though in concept I was in favor of it. So it's kind of where you're caught, Pat. I think we all have, but we know where you're coming from.
Dale, you look like you're confused before we vote on this.
I don't understand the penciling in part of it.
That means we're agreeing in, in general concept to what you presented, but with the public engagement, we'll finalize it when we put the, adopt the actual resolution.
You may find you need something that you haven't even perceived to make come up.
It might be exactly what you presented, it might be slightly different.
Yeah.
You might add to this. Does that mean we're approving 349 million, $600,000 and that it might end up being more? I'm just thinking of it in terms of I got to hit the ground running, marketing this thing.
Difficult sell when you don't have a number to sell.
People are going to want to know a number.
Right.
You know. Saying that we're, we're agreeing with the bond. We're just saying the amount is yet to be determined because the thing is, we're leaving you the flexibility. We're, as, as Commissioner Thompson said, there are sometimes some dynamics associated with this sort of thing. I know you got me down, but anyway. But my point is, we're trying to give you the flexibility to come back with something that you may not have anticipated that you need to add to it and say, gee whiz, I wish we had it in the bond. Because now you have the time, if it goes into the general, you have the time. You don't have the time if it goes to the primary. We're locked, we have to do it. So now you know our intention, our intention is to pass it. All of us up here intending, even Pat Sykes, all of us, only thing we've got a sticking point on is when. But the point being, getting back to you, we're giving you the most flexibility we possibly can give you. That's what we're trying to do. So you can still hit the ground running because you've got the voice from all of us.
I think what the problem is, the school's ready to move forward. They've looked at this and, and we're trying to hold, push them back even further. And it's kind of confusing because they're, they're on a timeframe and they're, they've got things scheduled that they want to get done and they can't move forward because we're putting them on hold. That's the way I feel about it. I feel like I'm, I'm putting them on hold if I don't vote for their support. The school, the school board voted to move forward with it. And I feel like we should support the school board and move forward as they have requested.
And to answer your question, then I'll comment on that. The way I would present it if I were you is the commissioners have agreed to put a bond on the ballot in November, assuming this motion passes, which it may not. the commissioners have agreed to put a bond on the ballot in November, assuming this motion passes, which it may not. Here's our proposed bond, what is your feedback on it before we finalize the details? That way, when you go out, you know, you're, you're not even asking, you're not even telling them what it's proposed as much as you're asking for the public's feedback. And you, and then you might find, you might find out that this proposal's not gonna go over well. And that we may need to tweak it, but you might find out it's gonna sell very well. You know, one of the, to me, one of the most important things in any PR campaign is the public opinion research upfront to find out what kind of feedback you get, and I've learned a lot of times that it tells me things I didn't think it was gonna tell me.
I, I understand your point, Mr. Williams, I think there's another point to be made that, uh, the average citizen is gonna wanna know what the number is and what the tax impact is going to be to them. And if I can't give them a reliable number and amount, I think people are gonna be turned off by that. And, um, and I think understandably so, I mean, I'm a citizen of Brunswick County, I, I would wanna know what the number is. And what am I being asked to support? What, what do I agree to? And I feel like it's gonna put me in a position of, well, this is what we've asked for, but it's just penciled in. We don't really know what it's going to be.
Yeah.
So I mean, I.
So can you modify your motion?
Go back to what mine was?
I, I do have.
Sorry, I rescinded it?
I do have one question, if I may. The numbers that you gave me in reference to the year and the amount of tax, moving it from the primary to the general, does that impact these numbers?
Yes.
Throw those at me if you don't mind.
I don't have them in front of me, because I based it on full year, uh, worth of principal and interest. If we were to go through with a, uh, November, uh, general election, most likely we would issue debt in, cause it, like, November.
Pushes it off.
It pushes it off, um, the first year would probably be an interest-only payment instead of principal and interest.
Okay.
Because once the bond passes, assuming it goes the way we want it to, or the way they want it to, uh, it still takes three to four months to actually sell the first bonds afterwards. So even if you do March, it takes time to actually get the funds in hand, and they can't move forward until they've got a committed funding source. Um, if, I'd have to redo some numbers, but if we did it in, um, if we did it in November, most likely it would be interest-only for the first year. You would have to go ahead and adopt a rate based off of, um, it wouldn't change it significantly, it just is ultimately at the end of the six-year worth, six years' worth of issues, it's probably gonna end up similar to five point seven four. It's just is gonna be phased in differently, based on what the amortization schedules are.
Okay. All right.
And, you know, what I was trying to accomplish was to let you know we're moving forward, but also, you know, give us a chance to, to get some feedback on it, but.
I understand your point, Mr. Williams, I just, I just wanted to understand mine.
I, I agree with you. I'm sorry I rescinded my motion.
I will, I will rescind my motion at this point, and we can go back to Commissioner Forte.
And I will go back to my original motion, that we approve the bond at three hundred and forty-nine point six million dollars, and it goes on the general election next November.
And I'll second.
Any discussion?
Well, I can't vote for it, so just.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Mr. Chairman, it may be noted that the only rationale for the nay was because of the timing, not in respect to the support of the bond.
Yeah.
We all recognize that Commissioner, uh, Sykes is very much as supportive of the bond. And it was only because of a technicality, she couldn't vote for it.
We can make sure the minutes reflect that as well.
Yes. And we will support her on that too, so.
Mr. Superintendent, we good?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Madam Clerk, Operation Greenlight.
And I will turn that over to Commissioner Williams.
Then it will be presented.
Yeah. Before the school folks leave, if any of the school folks are veterans, please raise your hand, anybody that's leaving. We're getting ready to recognize veterans, if there are any veterans who are headed out, please raise your hand so we can recognize you, any. But then we'll come back to this in a moment, we'll let y'all finish. Did Art leave?
Yeah, they left early.
Yeah, he left earlier.
Yeah. If there are any veterans in the room, could you please stand, any veterans at all in the room? Um, thank you all for your service, let's give them a round of applause. Next, before I read the resolution, could our veteran services staff that's in the room please stand? Now we've got, they do a tremendous job. This next resolution is something that originated a few years ago out of the National Association of Counties. Um, and it's called Operation Green Light for Veterans twenty twenty-five proclamation. Whereas the residents of Brunswick County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selflessly served our country in this community in the armed forces, and appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel, and believes specific recognition should be granted. And whereas, the contributions and sacrifices of those who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas, Brunswick County seeks to honor individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas, veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in twenty-nine states to help former, fellow former service members access more than fifty-two billion dollars in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas, approximately two hundred thousand service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas, active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas, the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for Veterans. Now therefore be it resolved, with designation as a Green Light for Veterans County, Brunswick County hereby declares November fourth through eleventh, twenty twenty-five as a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifices of those transitioning from active service, and encourages its citizens in patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who have made immeasurable service, sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights in a window at their place of business or, or residence from November fourth through eleventh, twenty twenty-five. This day, twentieth day of October, twenty twenty-five, sign Mike Forte, Chairman, and I move approval.
Good. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. This is an excellent program, proud of us for doing this. All right, Health Services, David Howard, come on up.
Evening. Thank you, I have the pleasure of introducing to you all a few members from our Substance Use Addiction and Mental Health Commission, which of course you appoint. Uh, as you know, they work diligently on examining and analyzing information around those topics, and every quarter they try to come to you and share with you insights uh, about a topic that they've been looking at. Uh, this evening, they'll talk to you about treatment, what that really is, what it really means, uh, some information and data around treatment in the area, and some recommendations. So, Jeremy Seaman, Cecilia Peers, and Kate Gomes are gonna present some information to you, thank you.
For your mental status exam, I'd like you to repeat that, uh, last motion that you guys made, like all the various.
Which one of the?
Right, once.
My mental health is already a little stressed over that one.
Let's talk about, uh, treatment, our focus for this quarter, for our presentation, um, for the Substance Use Addiction and Mental Health Commission. Um, we decided we wanted it to be treatment. Um, treatment, um, a quote, a quote that you may have heard, cause it's, it's a, it's kind of a common quote. Um, treatment is a first step, recovery is the whole journey. That's how you know the difference. Treatment is a first step, recovery is the whole journey. What is substance use disorder and mental health treatment? I actually heard a guy recently made a really great point and said, why do we say that substance use disorder and mental health treatment are two different things? They, the same book is where we diagnose them. And substance use disorder, um, is essentially the way that we handle a lot of our mental health, and I thought that was a really interesting point. Um, this is, uh, what you see on your screen, is a really complicated, um, definition to say we don't treat mental health and substance use as two separate problems. And it's a long-term goal, treatment helps people o- overcome their current struggles. We keep an open door for people, even if they need to come back, even if they're, um, you know, they're doing well and they need to come back and do treatment again, we keep the door open. Recovery has ups and downs, is another feature of, um, recovery and of treatment, and treatment is flexible. So that's really important, each person has a different road, just like has, each person has a different road in their recovery. Each person has a different way to get treatment, sometimes people really need really intense treatment. Sometimes person can, can just talk to a counselor or see a doctor. So this guy, Bill White, um, is a counselor just like me, and he created a really cool stages of recovery model. Unlike me, he wrote eighteen books, I've not written any books, so, um, I'm not done in any of those things. Um, and, but he talked about pre-recovery. We may, you know, maybe you know somebody or have known someone who's in pre-recovery there, we call it active use also. And then somebody initiates, or maybe they initiate their own recovery. Um, there's this great story, Dr. David Mealy tells about a guy that was in his office, and he said, um, thank you for coming, being willing to come into my office today and start your recovery. And the guy was like, I'm not willing to be here, I don't even wanna be here. And Dr. Mealy said, well, if you didn't come today, what was gonna happen? Well, my probation officer was gonna throw me in jail. So Dr. Mealy looked at him and said, well, thank you for willing to come sit in that chair rather than go to jail. So that's an example of recovery that's initiated somewhere else, right? A probation officer, DSS, a family member that says, I need you to get in recovery, it's not your choice. Sometimes jail itself starts somebody's recovery. And that's how it happens. And then, um, through some kind of a treatment may also help with that, but the three stages of, of recovery listed here, early recovery. This person is really fragile, if they're in early recovery. Three months in recovery, they may still be using every once in a while, or just have stopped using. At twelve months, we consider that to be sustained recovery. Uh, we say, wow, they've made it a whole year, so that's really, really good. But there's still some, you know, possibility, there's still some concern, they still need to be attending some, you know, potentially some, uh, recovery groups, an AA or a CR, because they, there's still some concern. And then long-term recovery, we love to see this, we love to see people in five years of recovery. Um, they still need to be doing the things they, they, that got them there five years later. But we, we are really happy to see that level of recovery. Let's talk about, um, the phases of treatment assessment. Or if you come into my office, you're gonna hear the word CCA, Comprehensive Clinical Assessment. Sometimes somebody needs to go to detox, because so- sometimes there are drugs or alcohol that, um, that really are not, not good or healthy for you to try to stop using all by yourself. Um, then active treatment, there's some type of treatment we're gonna recommend, whether that's counseling, whether that's three times a week of counseling. There's a, all kinds of possibilities, we have peer support now, which is a really cool thing, where somebody who is in recovery can also talk to you about recovery. And then recovery management, as I said before, everybody's recovery is really different. So I'm gonna tell you about seventy-year-old Joe. Seventy-year-old Joe is a guy I made up about two, two hours ago, and he, uh, pretend comes into Coastal Horizons. And, um, he has, uh, alcohol use disorder. So he's an example of somebody who maybe, uh, comes in with alcohol use disorder. Joe has a revoked license, his kids, or maybe grandkids, I don't know, don't talk to him anymore. He's got medical issues, and he's on probation for DWI, and that's why he ends up walking into my building, because probation sent him. So after I do an assessment, and, uh, after I, I do a treatment plan for Joe, maybe I'm going to recommend some counseling, maybe even three times a week counseling. I'm gonna say, Joe, you need some peer support, and I'd like you to get some medication evaluation. Because what's happened is Joe's brain, over fifty years of alcohol use, has had some severe deterioration, and we need to kind of be able to fill in the gaps um, to have him get a, a medication evaluation. Uh, and we're gonna provide some tailored support, potentially, care management, primary care, D, uh, a DWI assessment. Does Joe want his license back? Um, support groups, family counseling, all kind of things that we can connect him with. Um, recovery supports, and, um, maybe even some employment, um, and maybe a benefit specialist. So these are all things, all within that kind of realm of what we're looking Jo- for Joe to do to kind of move into the recovery space. It's not just about one or two things Joe can do, cause he's lost a lot of things, and he needs to gain a lot of things back in his life. The other thing I wanna say before I turn it over to Cecilia Peers, um, is that, um, Ju- uh, one of the mistakes I think we make is, um, we talk about rehabilitation, but a lot of people on alcohol and drugs never learn these skills, right? So it's not rehabilitation at all, it's actually habilitation. It, these things, when we're teaching people how to do a job interview, they've never done a job interview, right? When we're teaching people how to, um, learn some of these skills, um, doing a resume, these are not, these are totally new skills for them. So, um, I think that's important to understand as well. And I'm gonna turn it over now to Cecilia with Trillium, and she is our new vice chair, by the way, everybody. Way to go.
Thank you so much for having me in, I am not a clinician, so I'm gonna speak, um, in terms of, uh, in terms of Trillium as a managed care organization, um, your kind of local specialty Medicaid program. Um, and just wanted to share some information about, uh, levels of care in treatment. So just like Jeremy spoke of, um, substance use kind of happens on a continuum, where folks need different things at different times. They need care at different levels, um, and in different amounts. So the American Society of Addiction Medicine came up with criteria around different levels of care that's, that are appropriate, um, and can be, uh, accessed based on that assessment. So I won't go th- go through all of these, um, but just to kind of summarize them, uh, early intervention, so there are folks that we know who are at higher risk for using substances based on things like trauma, based on things, um, like having, uh, challenging childhoods, or having addiction in family, having, uh, parents, um, in jail, uh, and having some personal struggles, right? So there's early intervention for those folks, um, that provide education and some wraparound supports to try to help them avoid substance use to begin with. Then we have, um, outpatient treatment, so treatment that's offered in the community, uh, at some differing levels. And then sometimes, uh, individuals will need a residential recovery, so they really can't manage, uh, with a strong recovery program in their community. And so they will need to leave home for a while, either go to, um, detox or medically managed withdrawal. Um, and then, uh, and then stay in a residential program, potentially. And then, and then stay in a residential program potentially for a specific duration. There are also residential programs. So the medically managed inpatient is actually the highest level of care. Then there are residential programs that offer folks to leave the community, but they don't need that very intense level of care, like you would think of in a hospital or a detox center. So these, when we talk about treatment, we talk about some different types of treatment. And so at the outpatient level, you will get your intensive outpatient program, which is also called Substance Use Intensive Outpatient. Comprehensive outpatient treatment is a bit higher level of care. So you're talking about the difference between coming to an office for counseling and treatment three days a week versus five days a week. Medication assisted treatment is a combination of medication and therapy. Opioid treatment program again is similar, but we're talking about the difference between someone receiving their dose of medication in the office versus receiving a prescription to receive that medication from a pharmacy. Then you have inpatient care. So Jeremy spoke earlier about the very common comorbidity of mental health and substance use disorders. So in, inpatient care, some, someone may go in for psychiatric symptoms and also need to be treated for substance use as well, or, or vice versa. Often, you know, folks use substances to self-medicate. And once you detox from those substances, you really get to the heart of some serious mental health conditions that also need treatment. And you have various levels of residential treatment. Some folks just need kind of a short-term detox and then can return to the community for that outpatient care. What often happens is that to have whole-person recovery, we also need some additional support services. Peer support really has grown quite, quite a bit in the last few years in terms of the training that peers get and the availability of those services. Someone relates to someone else who has gone through recovery in a different way than they relate to someone who has not. As, as an individual who works in the field, and I think most of us or all of us have some personal experience. We can see what that looks like from the outside, but to experience the process of substance use and recovery and come out on the other end is, is really inspirational to our folks in recovery in a different way. And so that peer support is really helpful, also in helping people just navigate services and coming up on, on some of those challenges that you face when you are kind of doing life on life's terms without substances to cope. And then also people experience the need for, for medical care as a component to their recovery. So often when people are in active use or active addiction, they'll put off medical needs, or sometimes medical needs will develop as a result of that use. And so getting medical care is really crucial in terms of that, that process. Treatment is available for adolescents in the same way that it is available for adults. It looks a little bit different because of the developmental stages and the way children might use substances. That looks different than the way adults do. But there, it's available at those different levels of care. Just wanted to share a little bit with you in terms of treatment being available. We heard a previous comment about some of the challenges that we face with our workforce and the availability of providers in the health field. That tends to be true in the mental health field as well. But just wanted to give you the lay of the land in terms of availability of services. So we have four providers who provide that intensive outpatient, three who provide that comprehensive outpatient treatment, four who provide the medication assisted treatment or medicate, medication for opioid use disorder, which is some new language. Part of the substance use field and treatment is making sure our language is supportive of people who are in recovery and, and not creating additional stigmas or barriers. Because recovery has a lot of guilt and shame attached to it. And so we use terms and change terms to say things like opioid use disorder to help support people in recovery, feel good about their choices in making those first steps. Again, opioid treatment program, we have two. Currently, we do not have a detox here in Brunswick County. I will share that adjacent in New Hanover County, there's work on a stabilization and reentry center that will be open at the beginning of next year and that will provide detox as well as mental health crisis stabilization. So not in the county, but nearby that, that's the Old Harbor facility-based crisis with a reentry component to it. And then obviously one center for inpatient psychiatric care here as well. Some of that, the different service array, we have one adolescent treatment center. We have crisis services, so we have mobile crisis management. It's actually offered by two providers. We have one provider who's struggling with staffing. So RHA is our primary mobile crisis provider. We have two agencies providing peer support. Quite a number of agencies providing counseling and therapy. And then two residential recovery programs, which is great, and also two sober living homes. Then I think I'm turning it back over to Jeremy.
So I'm here for the not as good news, which is our challenge. As far as our mental health care providers in the county per the population served. Brunswick County has a hundred and sixty point nine per hundred thousand in the county. The average in each county in North Carolina is three hundred and twenty-three. So we have a, about half of what the average county in North Carolina has. And you can see the United States average is even a little bit more than that. We, we do a little bit better with addiction providers. We average twenty-seven per hundred thousand. North Carolina averages thirty. United States is at twenty-nine. So let's talk about that, that bit of data. As far as substance use, our county continues to face more serious challenge than others. We've been very aware of that over the last ten years with higher rates of both excessive drinking and fatal drug overdoses than the North Carolina state average. This is not new news to anyone here. But with a lower population of treatment providers, that may be new news to you. I don't know. And then as far as mental health, the picture is, is a little nuanced because with, while residents report less frequent mental distress on average than other counties around us, the county experiences a higher rate of suicide than the North Carolina state average. This pattern can sometimes suggest a community where individuals may be less likely to report or seek help for mental health struggles until they reach a point of severe crisis, which is not good for our emergency rooms. It's not good for crisis services and it's not good for our population. I'm gonna now introduce to you Kate Gomes. And she's gonna have some good news or some opportunity to give some recommendations. Right here.
So as we sit around and talk about where we need to go, what direction our particular commission needs to look at and needs to make recommendations to you guys, we look at a couple of very salient points. We need to build our workforce. We are lacking enough counseling professionals, social workers and therapists. I'm not sure what the answer to that is, but to, to keep our eyes open and understand that this particular, the mental health professionals located within the county and accessible to residents needs to grow. Encourage current growth. Invest in proven local programs to expand their resources and the impact on the community. We have several programs that are, are growing substantially over the last few years. And that's to our benefit and that really builds our resources. And, and the last one is to promote prevention and education, preventing early substance use with our kids, school programs, you know, going in and explaining to them about how to deal with a parent or a family member or their actual peer group that are, are encouraging them to get involved with drug use or anything else that is going to lead to that with, you know, small criminal activity or things like that. But I wanna target one particular thing. How many of you can drive down the road in this county and not go by something pushing vaping? Or other types of, of smoking and involved behaviors? Because that's down to third grade. We're talking kids are really getting used to the idea that a substance to alter their mood and fit in with peers is what is going to win them the good life. And we also have, you know, a few other things that are really helpful in terms of helping with prevention and education with the older folks. And that is our treatment court, which is a really positive and strong component. And really grateful to have that located here. One thing that is not on this list that I personally know and struggle with, because I worked with a lot of adult women who are gone through treatment, sober, completed that first year of sobriety. And even though housing is exploding in this county, they can't find anywhere to live. Because they have to prove that they, you know, that a credit check, which they can't do very well. They have to battle a criminal record. So nobody will rent to them because they're walking around with baggage. And these folks who have worked really hard to get to this point where they are sober for a year and earned it, not easily. And they can't then move on in their lives, get their kids back. Well, some of them can get their kids back, but they don't have a place to live. If you look at what it takes to get your kids back, you have to have a place to live. So finding some residential things where they can begin to rebuild their lives was, is a, is a priority that I know.
What questions do you have?
I have a few. I have served on the CRCI board as, as Commissioner Forte. And got family member that's at CRCI as a director there. And, you know, my cousin started the first AA chapter at Carolina. The dean said, they just partying. And he said, no, they're alcoholics. And they actually opened the first AA chapter at Chapel Hill. And our family's just riddled with it. But this has become almost like the new alcoholism for this generation. I will submit that when I came into office back around oh eight, we had the highest death rate for prescription drugs in the state, bar none. New Hanover had the highest death rate for street drugs. Well, that got turned around. If you look at it in snapshot, you'll sit here and say, well, it's terrible. Well, it's not as terrible as it was. It's bad, but it's not as bad as it was. But we have a lot of things going. And I'm not here to have questions, but I'm trying to preface it basically. We've got a lot of things going for us, and so much as you just mentioned, Kate, we have the treatment court. Yes, we do. We have the Anchor Initiative. Not only that, we have brought in Narcan, which brought down the opioid aspect. We took a very serious look because it, Coastal Care, which is precursor of Trillium, they said that when we had a hundred and thirty-five thousand people here, they were writing a hundred and sixty thousand scripts for opioids in this county alone. Now that doesn't even make sense. So law enforcement got behind that. And so we came from a concerted effort to turn this thing around. And we, and I think we have in a lot of respects. We have Celebrate Recovery. And we have other things when people are, are down and out. We've got, we've got a lot of nonprofits out here in the county that help people get on their feet. There is a residential program with CRCI. And, and so much as people are trying to get it back on their feet, trying to get employment, trying to get education, skill set, and they are able to live here. So I think that's a positive that's, that's there. And it's also a no-cost aspect. Because, you know, you're able to go through something that doesn't cost tens of thousands of dollars to get somebody to go through treatment. So these are some of the good things. But I think the questions I have are, are we getting ahead of this thing? Because we've already said that we've turned the death rate around. At least if you go back ten, fifteen years, we have. And at least as you were stating, we're above average as far as the number of deaths statewide. In other words, we have more, it's more acute than they do as far as the average, but it certainly isn't the highest death rate. So we brought it down to a median, but I guess one of my questions is, are we getting ahead of this thing? Are we sliding backwards? I recognize that they need to have more professionals in the field be able to handle this thing. I do think that although that it may be individually, as far as the subjective aspect, the stigma is there. But I think from another individual perspective, you know, I have taught classes at CRCI and I've said, you, one thing about you folks, and I've known alcoholics and my family have been alcoholics, you stared the dragon in the face and made him blink. And the reality is you are a much better individual because you know you've got your life back. And you can turn things around. And not only that, you mentor other people. And we are seeing that constantly here in Brunswick County through things like Celebrate Recovery and other things like that, other operations, AA and everything else. So I guess my question is, are we slipping backwards? Or are we gaining ground? If we're gaining ground, it's great, but we're not doing enough. We still haven't, until we get this thing solved. But I think the stigma is not as pronounced, at least I know a lot of people who are addicts or have been. And they're some of my best friends. And I don't consider there, I just consider it like you stated, it's a mental health issue. It's a treatment issue. It's something that we have to fix. But I don't wanna look at this thing ten years from now and saying, gee whiz, we're just in bad shape, if not worse. I mean, we need to find something that's gonna be able to help resolve this issue and make it. So do you have some type of light in the tunnel here that we're able to see? That we know that whatever we do, whatever we all do jointly, we're gonna be able to help turn this thing around? I guess that's my question. Are we, are we making headway? I think we are. We've certainly got a lot of programs here. We try to do everything we can for it. But are we making the headway that you would anticipate?
My, my answer's gonna be a lot more entertaining, but Celia's is gonna, is, is gonna be the one that, that probably is gonna, gonna be the more politically correct, so.
I, I don't care about political correctness. I just wanna know that, what the answer is.
Mr. Cook, you, you ever been in a, a pool and tried to hold a volleyball down under the water?
You sit on it. Yeah, yeah.
And this first, this is the first thing that came to my head when you said, are, are we getting ahead of this thing, right? Because there's, there's some, there's some really good things happening right now. There's a whole lot less fentanyl out there than there was just a year and a half ago. And we see it, we see it in the, you know, in the, the supply and the people coming in. There's a whole lot less fentanyl. As soon as the border got shut down, we started seeing a whole lot less fentanyl. There's a whole lot more meth than there was a year and a half.
So you could make meth.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, also, it, it, you know, it, it comes from other sources. I, I, you know, I, I won't go into all of that, but yes. So it's like holding that volleyball down. Someone who, and the other side of that too, I just did a training yesterday. And the, the thing we used to say is there's fentanyl in everything. And now what we're saying is there's And now what we're saying is there's everything in fentanyl. Right? Because literally what, when you're testing what somebody buys, thinking that it's fentanyl, it's, there's, there's so many different adulterants in what drug that they're buying. They're, they're buying cocaine and there's not a bit of cocaine in it, you know? It's, there's, sometimes they're getting rat poison. I mean, there's, there's, there's just, so there's, there's just all kinds of different adulterants in the, the supply of, of what the drugs that are out there. And it's even more important than ever that we address supply, but that we address demand and that we, that we are working to get folks into recovery, into treatment and, and off of some of these adulterated supplies that are really, really dangerous.
Let me, let me just finish here and say this. Some of my greatest friends. There are people who have dealt with this. They're some of the closest friends I've got in this world. And they're recovering. And we work with it every day. So that being said, my hat's off to you and I appreciate it. But I can tell you that the people that I know that are recovering, they want this as just as bad. They want, they want the recovery. They want to turn this around. And hopefully, Lord willing, we're going to see this in our lifetime get turned around. So thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Jeremy.
Any other question?
No. During your presentation, I saw that you mentioned in there, due to the fact of our growth here in the county, that we may be in a provider crisis. Is that what your numbers are showing? Is that we're in a crisis with our providers in this particular area? And, and, and one more, and that, because you did mention this as well. And that may have a relationship with higher suicide rates for our county? Is that what I'm hearing?
That, that is not. So part of it is, we are, we're within driving distance of New Hanover. And they have a, a lot more providers. People like United Healthcare, for instance.
But your numbers were almost double.
Double.
I mean, so I'm not looking from New Hanover to pull me out of this. I'm, I'm looking to make sure that the residents.
There is a, there's a significant deficit in our county. I'm not, that is what I was.
Is that a crisis?
Is that a crisis? It's a crisis for some. Yes, I'm willing to say that.
Okay.
If I don't have transportation to drive for 45 minutes to get, to get my, my mental health treatment, then it's a crisis for me. Yes, sir.
It's a, it's a complex question because we're talking about different health plans with different standards of care, different offerings in their network. So.
So what are we doing about this then? I mean, what are we doing as, I know that we've got our public health. I know that we've got committees that, and different groups that, that we deal with, with mental health and public health. And what are we doing to address this issue for Brunswick County? And what do we need to be doing to help you? There he comes.
I was going to say, I'd, I'd like David to take that.
Yeah, that's a great question, Commissioner Thompson. As Jeremy said, a lot of, a lot of the factors are, we're close to metropolitan center with providers. But it sure does make it a lot easier and feasible for people to access care if it's around the corner in their county. Some things we can do are advocate for better payment for providers in the Medicaid system, Medicare system, insurance companies who contract with the state health plan, those kinds of things. Because currently, one of the challenges has always been with substance use care and mental health care is it's a frequency challenge. When they say intensive outpatient or outpatient care, it's two, three, four visits with your counselor, including transportation, every week. Now, none of us go to the doctor three, four times a week and expect that doctor to get paid. But that's the challenge, getting those folks, those professionals paid, recruiting them to the area. Everything that goes along with growth and infrastructure in a community goes to recruitment of professionals who are mental health professionals, actual psychologists, psychiatrists, who can deal with a higher level, a higher intensive type of, of care. We have a pretty good substance use treatment numbers in terms of that ratio, that rate you saw. But mental health is a challenge. It's just difficult to, to get professionals attracted to an area where they're not getting paid.
Concerns me that Brunswick County is number one for, for attracting people statewide. And I think I heard this evening, like the fourth in the country for attracting people. And if you want healthcare though, you need to go to Ori County, or you need to go to New Hanover County. It's not happening in Brunswick County. And it looks like to me that we, we ought to be working somehow to improve that for Brunswick County. And it sounds like not, not are we looking at improvement, we're already behind the eight ball on doing it in this particular arena anyway. I'm sure, I'm sure if, if you, if you ask people about just getting a physician's appointment, I'm sure that's just as bad. So, okay, well, that pretty much, that drills down into my question. We just, we need to come up with a solution that's better than what we've got today.
It's absolutely true that population always outpaces infrastructure like schools, hospitals, healthcare. So one thing we can also do is include our, our area healthcare providers to include mental health and substance use treatment in their expansion plans. That's really important, not just physical health facilities and professionals.
Thank you for being here. And, you know, just one question. Obviously, you know, you mentioned that the proximity to, to New Hanover County is sort of offsets, but not completely. I do agree that there's a problem with those numbers. But do you have any breakdown on where in the county most of our providers are located? And the reason I ask, I live in Leland and I can be in downtown Wilmington as quickly as I can be in other parts of Leland from where I live. So I go to the doctor in Wilmington and it's closer than the doctor that's in Leland or just as close to my house as far as miles the crow flies, even though it's in another county. So I think a lot, you know, a lot of people up there, they're just as likely to go to New Hanover County, even if there is one in Brunswick. So I'd be curious to know, but the further south you go, the less that's going to happen. You know, if you're in Southport, unless you're going to take the ferry, you've got to go in Brunswick County. And a lot of the county is that way. So.
You have an idea of geographical distribution?
I mean, if I'm remembering correctly, Shiloh, I think there was maybe one or two in, in Bolivia, Leland. You know, some of the major centers that we think about in the county.
Yeah.
Just from my, off the, off the top of my head, kind of map of where.
And I'm, I think I might know the answer to this, but if somebody lived in Calabash, would their North Carolina insurance cover for them to go to a provider in South Carolina? Or would they need to go to a North Carolina provider?
From a Trillium perspective, we contract with providers that are within for a urban areas, 30 miles. For rural or suburban, it's 45. So, so we contract with folks across the border on either end to make sure that, that folks get the care they need at a distance. It's what's considered convenient or reasonable to them. So absolutely.
Thank you.
But, but a caveat for that is the licensure, because if you're a North Carolina resident, seeing a counselor in South Carolina will not work.
Okay.
And vice versa.
Yeah. In terms of the cover, they won't be covered because that person does not have a North Carolina license. Is that what I'm under, okay.
Yeah, from a payer standpoint, it really depends on whether or not that provider is in network with that payer.
Okay, yeah.
Cross United, if they are.
That's a whole different subject.
How many of the, yeah, how many of these providers in Wilmington are, they own their own business? And how many are run by a hospital? Because most of our doctors in, in Brunswick County work for the hospital. So we don't have the standalone that New Hanover would have standalones.
No, but certainly if, if, if the question is related to.
Mental health, mental health.
Practice, yeah. There's certainly a lot more private practice in.
New Hanover.
County than there is here. There's, there's a lot less private practice, although Kate represents private practice. But, but if you try to find a private practice counseling provider in a county, it's much more difficult to do.
Right. Because most of them are not coming to our county. So, you know, you have, I would say you would encourage people to come here with their, that we got plenty of business if you think that we need more. I mean, because don't you make money if they have insurance or whatever? It's just like a regular business.
Well, we thank you for coming and, and your presentation. As somebody who suffered from substance use disorder for a number of years, I am in my 40th year of recovery and sobriety. Thank you. I know how important this is. Like Marty said, I am on the advisory board for Christian Recovery Centers. And I'm down there often. And I, I do talk to a lot of those guys down there that recently come in. And I tell them, don't do what I did. It'll destroy your life. I can promise you, it's a rough road back. So I, I thank you for your presentation. We're looking to, what can be done? I wish we can get more providers here. I'm on the Board of Directors for Novant Hospital. And I can tell you, it is very difficult to get people here. Whether it's doctors, any kind of provider, it doesn't matter. It's difficult. So I, I thank you all for what you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Before we move on, it is 8:04. We're going to take a little quick bio break, as they like to call it. We will be back at 8:10. So you got six minutes to do what you gotta do and stretch your legs. Am I not on? All right, if we can get everybody back in their seats, let's, let's continue. And no, it was a five minute recess. We weren't adjourned.
I'm moving that we make, we adjourn till next time.
No.
Was that a gavel or was that a Yeti?
I'm going to stay standing till you gavel us back.
Yeah, me too.
My legs are hurt.
Me too.
Waiting for a couple of people to sit down.
Why don't I stay standing? We're good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I read this.
Waiting on Steve.
Changed since the last time we got.
Which one? Oh, I don't know.
All right, we're going to start this up again. Thank you, everybody. Okay. Lanning, Mark, I assume you're doing this tonight? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Here's who wants to extend her apologies. She was unfortunately called away on a family emergency. But I am quickly going to get out of the way. I'm going to bring back our UDO consultant, Michael Harvey, with in focus to provide tonight's presentation.
Hello again.
Hello again.
Can everybody hear me with the mask?
Yeah.
Sorry, I've been, started coughing this morning and I don't want to share whatever this is, so forgive me. You all had asked us at your last meeting. Uh, you all had asked us at your last meeting to come back with some options on the various development review processes in your current ordinance and give you some alternatives and some suggestions for you to react to and give me direction as it relates to finishing, uh, the admin portion of the U D O and how various projects will be processed. Either handled at the planning and zoning board or handled through you all. So what Kirsty, Mark and I have done is put together in your packet several slides, providing you what some of the options are for your reaction. My hope tonight is to get some guidance and direction on what you're comfortable with and then move forward with finalizing uh, the draft of the unified development ordinance as it relates to review processes. So without further ado, I want to talk about the text amendment process. That's where you all uh, or the county, excuse me, will be processing an amendment to the unified development ordinance. There's four to five components of this process. Step one is a pre-application conference and you're going to notice some themes here as we go through this presentation. Uh, this is where the staff meets with an applicant to discuss the request, where they explain, outline and define what the expectations, timeframe and schedules are going to be and prepare them to be as successful as they can be. Remember, staff's obligation is to educate, guide and direct and make appropriate recommendations on a proposal at the appropriate time. Once an application is submitted, it goes to your technical review committee where it's uh, discussed by your internal staff members and the staff formalizes its comments. Step three is the planning board review. Uh, they will accept the application, take public comment because there is public comment opportunity at the planning board meeting. And then they make a recommendation to you all. There's the legislative hearing that you all hold. It's advertised consistent with your ordinance and state law. This is obviously a public comment opportunity and you make the decision. Last step is if somebody doesn't like that decision, they can appeal it to superior court. In focus is not recommending any changes. We're preserving your review authority. Planning board review is being kept as is. I want to remind everybody, the planning board review occurs in a public meeting, not an advertised legislative hearing. So while it's open to the public and accepting comments, it's not advertised like you have to advertise it consistent with state law. So we're not recommending any changes to the text amendment process. Conventional zoning. Wanted to find what that means for you all very quickly. Conventional zoning is where I own an agricultural piece of property. I want to rezone it to another residential general use zoning district. I'm not proposing specific land uses. I'm not submitting a site plan. I am seeking to rezone the parcel from zoning one to zoning two. And whatever land uses are permitted in that new district, I can develop consistent with your current U D O. So there is no site plan. There are no conditions you can impose on this. This is merely an up or down vote based on whether or not it's consistent with your land use plan. You'll notice the steps are the same. There's a pre-application conference. Again, staff has to educate the applicant on what they have to anticipate, what they're going to have to do if they're going to be successful. There is the application submittal and T R C review. There is a planning board decision. They hold the legislative hearing. They advertise the hearing. They accept public comment and then they make the decision. If someone wants to appeal, they appeal to you. You hold your own independent legislative hearing. You take it another look at it. You accept public comment and you make a final decision. Step five, it's appealed to superior court. In focus and the planning staff are not recommending any changes. I want to remind you, these are typically non-controversial items. The issue is, is it consistent with your comprehensive plan or is it not consistent with your comprehensive plan? That's the only issue. You're not approving specific land uses or a site plan, so it's not as controversial. We don't believe that this process, uh, has any issues as it's currently operated. Conditional zoning. We are recommending some changes. Conditional zoning is where someone comes to the county with a site-specific development plan and wants to propose specific land uses on a given parcel of property. You are looking at a site plan. You're looking at specific land uses. You're looking at specific density. You're looking at specific parking orientation and layout. There's more decisions to be made. Remember, through the conditional zoning process, mutually agreed to conditions between the county and the applicant can be imposed, but it has to be done in writing. The steps are virtually the same. Pre-application conference, application submittal and T R C review. We add a step or your ordinance currently adds a step. There's a neighborhood meeting. The applicant gets to meet his new friends, all the adjacent property owners. And the whole purpose of the meeting is so the applicant can inform those who attend what's going on. They answer questions. The staff's responsibility is to educate those in attendance on how the process works. It's meant to be an informational meeting. Step four of your current process is the planning board holds the legislative hearing, makes the decision. So the advertising is consistent with state law and your ordinance. There is public comment opportunity, but the planning board under your current process makes the decision. That decision can be appealed to you all where you hold your own legislative hearing. And then last, but certainly not least, if somebody doesn't like what you do, it could be appealed to superior court. The alternative process, we're looking to get feedback from you all tonight, goes as follows. We're keeping step one, the pre-application conference, step two, the application submittal and T R C review, and the neighborhood meeting the same. No changes. Step four is new. Planning board reviews and makes a recommendation. So much like the text amendment, the planning board is going to hold in a public meeting, review the con- conditional zoning request. They're going to accept public comment. They're going to ask questions. They're going to make recommendations. But they will not make a decision. You all in step five would be tasked with holding the legislative hearing, accepting public comment and making the final decision. And if somebody doesn't like your decision, guess what? It gets appealed to superior court, just like the current process does. Why are we recommending the change? Well, the pros of this alternative process effectively means that you all are making the decision, not the planning and zoning commission. Some of the concerns that I know you've heard, because I was at the last meeting with you, and some of the concerns I've heard you've expressed to me is that if there's going to be decisions on approval of site plans or site-specific development work, it should be the elected official non-advisory. This process does that. It preserves the planning board's ability to make a recommendation to you, but it doesn't prove, it does not continue to provide for them to make a decision. Staff is still going to be central to the process and makes recommendations. And it expands public review opportunities. Because the planning board looks at public comment, you all will essentially take public comment as well as part of the legislative hearing. Also want to remind you, we're keeping the neighborhood meeting process because we think that's essential, but they got's vital. What are some of the cons I want you to think about before you give me direction? It will add approximately thirty days to the review process. Why? Because we gotta take it to the planning board, then we gotta take it to you all. It's going to be about thirty to forty-five days somewhere in that timeframe. Um, it requires the public and the applicant to attend multiple meetings. Some people may not consider that a burden. In some communities I serve, that is, we're, we're, we're evil. Staff is just trying to draw out the process of people get bored and don't have their right to participate. I personally don't buy that argument, but it's a con you're going to hear. Um, it does make the process a little bit more cumbersome. Because now we're going to the planning board to make a recommendation, then we're coming to you. Uh, it will increase costs primarily for the applicant and there will be an additional impact on staff resources. Just some things to keep in consideration while you're deliberating and giving me some direction. Plan development. Your current process calls for a pre-application conference, application submittal, a neighborhood meeting, uh, then step four is the planning board, uh, public hearing because they are the decision maker in this process and appeal directly to superior court. The recommended process keeps steps one, two, three, four effectively the same. We are recommending that we add the appeal as with other rezoning requests where disenfranchised individuals can appeal directly to you all. Again, you will hold a new legislative hearing. It'll allow you to review the planning board's action, review the project and make a determination. Step six is always the same. The last step in the process is the decision can still be appealed to superior court. There is an alternative process, the plan development, that we would like you all to give us some feedback on tonight. Again, step one, two and three, which is the pre-application conference, the applications middle and neighborhood meeting are all going to be preserved. Step four, however, becomes the planning board reviews and makes a recommendation to you all. Again, they're going to hold a review in a public meeting, not an advertised legislative hearing. They will make a recommendation. They can recommend possible conditions as well. You all, however, would hold the public hearing, the advertised legislative hearing where you're going to review, receive the planning board recommendation, the public staff comments, review the request, accept additional public comments and then agree to mutually agree to conditions and then make a decision. Voting it up or down. The last step again is the appeal to superior court. Any questions on that? I'm not trying to speed through this, but I want to be mindful of your time. Now, there are pros and cons to this. Um, the big pro is that you all be making the decision, not an advisory board. It still has to occur in a duly advertised public hearing. The planning board is still going to be involved in the process. It is not making the decision. They are making recommendation to you and that would include conditions. Staff is still central to the process. There are expanded public review opportunities. Also remember that we are recommending that plan developments be processed as a conditional zoning request. So that's why the two are mirrored in terms of the process we are looking at tonight. The cons? As you'll remember, it's going to add about thirty to forty-five days to the process. There's going to be attendance at multiple public meetings. Some will argue that it makes the process more complex and cumbersome for routine or what some might call non-controversial items. There'll be increased costs of facilitating the rezoning request, which will be borne by the applicant. And there's going to be a need for additional staff resources. Site plan review. Want to remind you all.
Wait, wait, wait.
Yes, sorry.
Going back what you just said, your, your last sentence.
Mm-hmm.
Would this require additional staff? Do I have to hire with to make these changes? Do we have to hire more staff for planning?
I'm not going to necessarily state you're going to have to hire more staff. Your staff is going to be asked to do more work. And I believe that's a question, and if I'll be blunt, Mr. Chairman, that question is better asked of Ms. Dixon when she returns or Mark if he can come up and wants to speak to that. Um, I can tell you I manage the same process in three jurisdictions, the way I've laid it out for you. And yes, the staff commitment and the staff need to do work is excessive, but it's all guaranteed to do the same thing. Make sure it's an open and fair process. So. Thank you. Yep. So I want to remind you on site plan, your current ordinance establishes two categories of site plan, major and minor. Major is seventy-five thousand square foot of proposed building area or over and it's reviewed by the planning board. And one thing that Kirsty, Mark and I have talked about on numerous occasions, most of your major site plans actually show up as plan developments. So your planning board very rarely reviews major site plans. They typically review a plan development instead because that's how the project usually comes in. Minor, under seventy-five thousand square feet is reviewed by staff. And the process is laid out as a pre-application conference. I know it's getting repetitive, but I'm sorry. There's T R C review, the planning board hearing and decision, because they do make the decision for major site plans and then an appeal to superior court. What we are recommending is we keep steps one and two the same. But number three, it becomes a staff review and decision. All site plans should be acted on by staff. There should not be a major or minor distinction anymore. Why am I recommending that? Sorry. Step four is appeal to the board of adjustment, which I'll explain in a little more detail in a second. Step five is appeal to superior court. Why am I recommending that change? Want to remind you all that actions on site plans are not discretionary. It's binary. One or zero. It either meets the ordinance or not. Your staff are the appropriate subject matter expert to determine compliance with the ordinance. Here in simple. Um, to do it otherwise potentially subjects the county to litigation. Why? Because if a site plan is denied for some aspect that is not in your U D O, then that board has exceeded its authority. And you'll be subject to potential litigation. You cannot impose conditions beyond the authority granted in the ordinance. And as a result, there's no need for there to be an external review just in staff because all staff is attempting to do is enforce the code as written and adopted by you all. So it's our opinion that taking items to the planning board in this instance sets the planning board up to fail, the applicant up to fail and the staff up to fail. Because the planning board then probably gets itself in a position where, oh, we have to approve it, but we don't want to. Let's eliminate that problem. Why are we doing board of adjustment review? Remember, every decision that staff makes is subject to appeal to the board of adjustment. State law, it's your ordinance. So if I deny a site plan, that denial is subject to appeal directly to the board of adjustments, who then determines whether or not I erred in my application of the code. Then the board of adjustments decision is appealed to superior court, whether or not the board of adjustment aired and making its decision to whether or not I screwed up or not. Uh, the change will not increase project timeline review. Um, that is also one benefit from my standpoint of why we're doing this. I should also parenthetically remind you all at this point in time, there's a potential state law change that would eliminate advisory board or even elected official review of certain projects, subdivisions and site plans being one of them. So the ordinance that I'm recommending actually would bring you into compliance with what we believe is going to be adopted by the general assembly. Subdivisions. We are recommending that subdivisions less than a hundred lots be processed through the existing subdivision process, one that I'm going to summarize here. And that if it's a hundred lots or more, its process is the plan development, meaning a conditional rezoning. That would be recommended by the planning board, reviewed by you all in a public hearing if you adopt the alternative process we've outlined here tonight. Subdivision process currently is a pre-application conference, T R C review, planning board, public hearing and decision, and then appeal to superior court. That's your current process. What we're recommending? We keep the pre-application conference and the T R review, T R C review the same. We're going to add the neighborhood meeting construct to this process so we get more public input. More opportunity for the public to comment. Step four, the planning board will be allowed an opportunity to review and offer comments, but it's not making a decision. Much in the same vein that I listed out with site plans, this is discretionary. Does it meet the code? Does it not meet the code? You can't deny subdivision just because you don't like it. Does it meet your ordinance? If the answer is yes, then there's an obligation to approve it. Otherwise, you set yourself up for potential litigation. So the staff would be making the decision. Any denial of a subdivision is automatically appealed to superior court. That's state law. So that's the new process. Why are we doing the changes? Again, you've heard me say this once already. There's a pending state law change that would not permit advisor elected officials taking action on subdivision requests. This is not a discretionary review. It either meets your ordinance or it doesn't. And staff is the appropriate matter expert to determine that. There are no opportunities. There are no opportunities to impose conditions. So why set an advisory board up or the elected officials up? To not be able to do anything to address a public comment unless it's in your code, you can't impose it. Everybody following me?
Michael, which? Which Senate bill is this? Is this seven sixty-five?
Uh.
Or three twenty-eight?
They have split the bills up so bad, sir, I don't remember anymore.
I know.
But yes. It's either seven sixty-five, it's either the two, it's one of the two you mentioned, but it also appears in two other bills that made crossover.
Yeah, another one, two oh five or three oh five, whatever it is. Okay.
General Assembly is taking a lot of the bills, splitting them up and putting language in various other documents that are still under review. But this is still active. This is still an active request.
And it is your belief that these bills are all going to pass?
Yes.
Mine too. Okay.
And talking with several members of the General Assembly, um, they want to remind everybody who's in charge.
Yep.
Sorry to be blunt, but that's the truth.
No, it's I a hundred percent agree with you.
So we're at the point now where it's discussion and feedback. I understand this is a lot to take in. But if the board is amendable, what I'd like to do. Is very quickly, again, I know you have other work to do tonight. Does anyone on the board have a problem with the proposed text amendment process, keeping it as it is? No changes. Remember, that's you all making the decision and accepting planning board's recommendation. Not trying to put you on the spot, but I'm just trying to make sure I get the direction you want to get me.
Go back to the prior slide, just so you skim through it.
I'm not a fan of it coming before rush for the decision.
That's the way it currently is on text.
Yeah.
Text amendments.
They do that in Raleigh. I mean, you think I have no choice anyway.
Yeah, I'm fine.
If they're going to vote for it in Raleigh, he doesn't have any choice anyway, right?
Well, the text amendment process under the various bills going through the General Assembly would not be altered. That's a good thing.
Stay like this process.
Yeah.
It's not changing.
Yeah.
Correct. There's no, there's no current legislation going through the General Assembly that would result in a change to a text amendment, or technically a map amendment. It's really your discretion. The only change that could potentially happen is site plans and subdivisions. So what I'm gathering, and again, sorry, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but on one level, I'm putting you on the spot. You all are okay with the text amendment process?
The way it is.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
And you have no changes, so, okay.
Okay. Conventional zoning. Remember, this goes to the.
Can we go back to text amendments?
Hmm.
I just, can we go back to text amendments? I understand it's not text amendments as a whole. But text amendments that would effectuate downzoning is still prohibited, right?
You still have to comply with downzone. Regardless of what you do, you still have to comply with it. So if you're going to downzone or initiate an action that creates a downzoning, you have to have everyone's acquiescence.
Yep.
I mean, this, this process doesn't change that at all.
I'm. Just making sure the board understands.
Yeah, we understand because those text amendments that we, we tried to get the planning board to adopt prior to the state legislation. Where they wanted to table it until after this was done, has gotten us into all the problems that we're in today. So, yeah, I understand it real well where we're at. Uh, yeah.
Well, Commissioner Thompson, this is not going to make you feel any better.
Uh, no.
You have a lot of, you have a lot of company.
No, it's not.
You have a lot of company in, in that problem and, and I don't. I believe that the downzoning fix.
Would have acted on the, on the text amendments that we tried to get them to, to address early on. I mean, I don't think we would be. As. We, we wouldn't be under the gun like we're under and getting all the heat from the public like we are, but.
Potentially, that's, that's a true statement. Yes.
Yeah, it, it is what it is at this point, so.
But we still have opportunity to move forward with the U D O.
And then they got the gall to go into their meeting and say that the commissioners are causing them to, uh, to, to, we're complaining about their, uh, uh, the legal actions that'll take place if they don't make a decision. Well, they're the ones that caused it. And now they're causing a. Us to get into litigation.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm not a fan of the planning board by any means at all, so.
Understood.
But I understand they got, it's a part of a process, so I'm, I'm.
But I remind you all, and I, and I know you all know this, and so forgive me, I'm not trying to insult your intelligence. You can still go through a text amendment that creates a downzoning. As long as you have everybody's acquiescence that could be impacted. Now. How are you going to be able to facilitate that? Well, let's be blunt. You're not going to get everyone's acquiescence. We know that. So as part of the U D O update, we're trying to provide you some tools that helps lessen the blow of what the downzoning statute does.
Yeah. I'm fine with what, what you get.
So the text amendment, we're keeping the same. Is, is the, is what I'm gathering. Conventional zoning, remember. It goes to the. Planning board with an appeal to you all. Do you want to change the conventional zoning process?
You didn't recommend any changes.
No, we kept it the same. And part of the reason is. This is not a controversial process. It's a binary statement. It either meets your comprehensive plan or it doesn't. And it preserves the appeal right to the B O C C if somebody wants to do it.
I like that. Keep it, keep it the way it is.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
All right. And again, I'm not trying to rush you, but. Conditional zoning.
Well, let me state on this on conventional zoning.
Mm-hmm.
I like the aspect of the planning board making decisions because they're typically professionals that goes through staff, staff gives the recommendation. Goes to the planning board. That gives the public time to be able to interact with the, with the planning board. Okay, if they don't like it, what I do like is it being able to be appealed to us.
Okay.
And I do like that because that gives the, that gives the applicant an additional step. So if it's turned down by the planning board, they can do it. What I don't like is it going straight to us because as you stated, it's going to be less expeditious. The second thing is it's going to be more expensive for the applicant. It's going to be more intensive for the staff. It's going to take a lot more time to be able to do these things, especially when things can be just generally routine. So we're going to be going through a lot of bureaucracy and that's what I hear a complaint on a lot. And I see that myself when I have to deal with the state and the Fed. There's a lot of hoops to jump through and if you could just expedite it, it'd be a lot better for everybody. So. That being said, I, I would rather it go initially to the planning board, let them vote on it and they can peel it to us and then they can build Superior Court.
So remember the. Uh, thank you for that. Remember that the alternative process would be the planning board would still receive it, make a recommendation, but they would make the decision. Then it comes to you, but I hear you. I just wanted to clarify.
We can, we can close it out. They could close it out if everything's amenable. They can go ahead and appeal it, but I would submit that. It'd be more expeditious if it went to the planning board and then it was closed from there.
So is there any other input for me as I'm retooling your ordinance? We keep the conditional zoning process as is? Meaning, applications, the middle, TRC, neighborhood meeting.
I like the neighborhood meeting. That's a good idea.
Yeah. Planning board reviews, makes a, makes a decision and then it's appealed to you all and then.
Appeal to Superior Court or not.
Right.
These are just, yeah, that's, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Just making sure, because again, I need to. I owe you an ordinance. I'm trying to make sure that I'm doing what you want me to do. I don't need to go with the pros and cons. Remember, plan development, we're making a recommendation to become a conditional zoning.
I'm not, I'm not in favor of the alternative process whereby it sidesteps the planning board and comes to us. And appeals to Superior Court in same respect that we just talked about.
Well, no, sir, to be blunt, given what you've decided on conditional zoning, if plan development goes to a conditional zoning process, it would follow the same process you would like.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not creating two conditional zoning processes for you.
Okay, good. So in other words.
Right.
moot issue. Okay.
And this one's fine.
It's moot from the standpoint that it's going to follow the process you've all asked me to follow. So.
The planning board, the planning board makes a decision and appeals to us.
Appeals to you and then potential appeal to Superior Court.
Okay, cool. Thanks. I'm just.
And that's the change that you're making.
Change I'm making is I'm taking plan development and making it a conditional zoning request. But it's going to be planning board action, appealable to you, and then your decision's appealable to Superior Court.
As you went through them, I'm fine with all the things that you wanted to change.
All right, so I can do that?
I have a question. Um. Conditional zoning process as opposed to now it's what a development agreement process?
More or less.
Um, what does staff think about that? Because I know that's, I know, I'm just curious about the difference from your perspective and. Development agreement versus conditional zoning. Because it sounds like.
Agreement.
This sounds like we would be going away from development agreements to conditional. That's. I don't know the nuances of that. I, I basically just told you everything I know about how it works, but I'm.
Well, I love it.
Here's staff's opinion.
I think it'll be great. To go to conditional zoning. From our current process.
Conditional zoning by itself, and then, then I don't want to interrupt Mark, but conditional zoning in and of itself is a development agreement. If you really want to get technical about it, because it's, it's a body negotiating mutually agreed to conditions where conditions have to be mutually agreed to.
I'd like to hear the manager's take on it if he has any thoughts.
I think in some jurisdictions. The public sees conditional zoning as being. Somewhat arbitrary optically and. They may not understand the nuances of it and how you have different rules because you have different sites or different proposals. And sometimes I think it. May create more public angst. Than a. A more clear cut. Process. Uh. I, I also think. Anytime we have situations where. The planning board. Ultimately. Agrees with staff recommendations, if we then pull the Board of Commissioners. In. Other than through an appeal. And they make a different decision than staff have recommended and the planning board has recommended. I think we've loaded up the applicant with ammunition. To take to Superior Court.
Certainly not going to disagree with that, but. Everybody plays a role in whatever process you develop. If your process is staff makes a recommendation, planning board makes a recommendation. Obviously, the elected officials are not bound by those recommendations. They, they never will be. But you're.
I understand that.
And I'm not going to, not going to say it's not valid at all.
I understand that, and I think the, the, ultimately, the board's primary. Role is to. Develop the rulebook. Which the staff and the planning board use.
Yes, sir.
And I wanted to address Mr. Forte's question about the staff resource increases. I had this exact conversation with. Kirsty via phone earlier today, and she said that would be a likelihood. Now, how significant? I don't think it would be extremely significant, but. Yeah, probably at least.
Talking four or less employees, you thinking?
I, I would say at least one or perhaps two positions.
That's it?
Yeah.
I was concerned that we were going to have to hire sixteen or twenty new people.
You have a very competent staff. And.
Oh, I love our staff.
They, they do good work.
I know.
One of the reasons you have some of this, a lot of the successes you have now is because of your staff. Our job is to give them a document that gives them the tools to be successful. And your planning board, and ultimately you. So I think we're on the right path. So everybody's okay with plan development, becoming conditional zoning.
I have a question or two.
Okay.
I've got to sleep on that.
Yeah, I, I might have to as well. Let me ask these questions. All right. So plan development. This could be anything from. Fifty houses to five thousand houses. True?
One hundred. One hundred.
All right. So we're going to use a hundred as the baseline.
Yeah.
So it could be a hundred houses. It could be.
Sorry, but yeah, a hundred houses or more.
Okay. And, and could go up to. Any number infinite. Right? And they're all going to be handled the same.
Yes.
So this, what you're recommending. Staff makes a recommendation based on every I is dotted, every T is crossed.
And every requirement of your U D O, correct.
Planning board does the exact same thing. They make sure that everything is correct. And follows the U D O to the left.
Mm-hmm.
Then it could get, it could get appealed to this board.
Yes.
And our only function. Is to make sure that everything was, every I was dotted, every T was crossed. It's not to change anything. It's just to make sure that the process was properly followed.
Your role, and I will probably defer to Mark and your attorney. In a moment, but your role ultimately. Is to determine whether or not the project's compliant with the ordinance and meets the comp plan. You certainly are going to benefit from the recommendation of staff. And the recommendation of the planning board, but you're holding your own independent, separate legislative hearing. You're not rubber stamping anything. Not that that's what you're implying. But you are going to be determining. Whether or not the project is compliant with the code.
But we're not looking at the merits case.
No, you're, you're hearing it all over again.
Yeah.
Basically, the planning board final decision becomes a recommendation. And then you still have a full hearing and look at it from the get-go. The point he's making is. The hearing itself is mainly to see if the development complies with the rules.
Yes.
And that's what he's saying by I's dotted and T's crossed.
But that's only if they appeal it, right?
Correct.
They have to appeal it.
I mean, yeah.
And most of the time, the planning board has approved it.
Yeah. Why wouldn't we want them to come to us if they appeal it?
I don't see any reason why you all shouldn't have the appeal for these major projects just because it's just good standard practice.
Right. I agree.
And my question's not about the appeal, and maybe I'm mixing the two up, but. The plan, the, the development agreement versus the, um, conditional zoning, I'm still. Processing the nuances of the distinction between those two.
Well, remember, under North County General Statute, a development agreement is where you as a party are entering into an agreement with the developer for certain development activities to occur in a certain period of time. Uh, you have skin in the game technically with a development agreement. I liken a conditional zoning to a development agreement because you are imposing mutually agreed to conditions without necessarily taking on any responsibility for the project.
Can a development agreement? Add conditions that could not be added in a conditional zoning, or could you add the same conditions on both?
It's basically the same. From a condition standpoint, there's virtually no difference. The big difference in the development agreement again. Is that you as a unit of local government are committing to do certain things, whereas in a conditional rezoning. You're just imposing conditions. Which have to be mutually agreed to.
So it's less exposure with respect to the county.
And, and less liability for you to have to do something.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Now, I'm a big fan of development agreements for very specific, certain set circumstances, not for everything.
Yeah.
Plan development, in my opinion, is best handled through the CZ process.
Our attorney's already, he said the same thing. He likes that better.
Yep. Mi- Michael, when you say that, do you mean that? Plan development process would effectively go away, then it would all be conditional zoning or, or plan development would just be the exact same process as the.
Plan development would follow the exact same process, but plan development is a specific type of development activity. It's just going to follow the conditional zoning process.
I think it's almost more of an overlay.
Yeah.
If you look at it that way.
Okay, that makes.
I could accept that. That's a nice summary. Were there any concerns about? Site plan or subdivision?
Oh, let me get there.
Well, you said, uh, staff review and make a decision.
Mm-hmm.
And. You're basically saying, if I'm, if I got you correct, what you said, Michael, is you said they're only looking at if all the boxes are checked.
Correct.
So that really doesn't have to have any interpretation. They're sitting there and saying, has this been done? Yes. Has this been done? Yes.
Does it meet, does it meet the requirements of this section? Yes. And if the answer is no, it gets denied.
It needs, doesn't need to go through another level.
No. Not in my opinion.
I don't see an issue with that.
I think it streamlines your current process and the same goes for subdivisions. I think it streamlines the current process.
Because either it does comply or it doesn't.
Yeah.
So presently, the staff does not review, um, site plans?
No, they review minor site plans, which is anything under seventy-five hu- seventy-five thousand square feet. Excuse me.
So we're adding the new where they would.
Staff's going to review it all.
Okay.
No distinction.
Okay.
And I don't think the distinction served Brunswick County anymore. That's my opinion.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sure the staff reviewed it before the planning board reviewed it, but that, but the planning board.
Yes, the, the, the staff did their normal function.
Yeah.
Their normal due diligence function. And then subdivisions, because of where I, where I think state law's going, I'm just nipping it in the bud and saying your staff should do it. Under one hundred lots, because anything over a hundred lots is processed as a plan development. So we're also adding again under the subdivision, neighborhood meeting.
Yeah, I like the neighborhood.
I do too. I like that.
Planning board's still going to look at and offer comments, but they're not making a decision. I want to preserve the planning board's right to offer staff some guidance. But staff ultimately has to make the decision. And if you all are okay with that, then I'm going to rewrite Article Three, which is your processes section accordingly.
I'm not an attorney, but it looks okay to me.
Yeah, I was going to ask.
You're going to get multiple bites at this apple, so is your.
Okay. I'm about to.
Has all these recommendations been reviewed by the county attorney? Has all these recommendations been reviewed by the county attorney?
They've been reviewed, but not all were necessarily agreed with, but it's only the recommendation of staff, so. For uh, one of my notes was on the. Appeals of conditional rezoning, but that's already been taken care of, so.
Okay, so so are you okay with what's being recommended?
Yeah, the recommendation is legal.
Okay.
Do you see anything in this? That you think can come back to bite us on the butt later? Is there something that gives you pause?
No.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, just to remind you of my contract obligations, I have to make your staff happy. I have to make your manager happy. I have to make your attorney happy. Before I get to make your planning board and you happy.
You can make all those people happy.
Yeah, you don't even come down my road.
I'm gonna remind you.
You make that many happy, go for it, man.
You can write a bestselling book.
I'm gonna remind you, this is a partnership. We're not here dictating what you're doing. We're here making sure that you have the tools in your toolbox to be successful, period. Also, remember, we are with you for the next two to three years after you adopt this ordinance, helping staff. That's our commitment to you. There's no cost to that. That's a warranty period that's you've already agreed to on our contract.
Does he need, you need a motion to?
I was getting.
The only thing I would want a motion to is a major deviation from anything I've said. If you're all saying move forward with what you've done, I think I have enough consensus to.
I'm good.
If you go through those, that might help you.
Yeah, I was looking at them. I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
In fact, because these here make it real easy to to know what the changes are.
Yeah, I've looked through the cha- I just wanted to make sure I clearly understood the distinction on what was going to change as far as. Whether that process was going to completely go away, because I know our staff does a lot of negotiation with.
Yep.
People during that process, and I wanted to make sure that.
And we need to preserve that.
Still there.
Yes.
I will say I appreciate him reading the writing on the wall, so when these bills are actually enacted, we don't have to redo this again in six months.
One of my concerns. None of us, nobody in this room has any idea what's going to happen in Raleigh.
Neither does anybody in Raleigh.
Right, right.
Yeah.
They're still fighting it out. They can't even get sit in the same room. Um. Should they do something unexpected that we're not anticipating?
Which will happen.
Uh, guaranteed. Um. Would it be easy for us if we were to implement all of this?
Hmm.
Okay. And they do something that puts us out of compliance in some way? How quickly can we make a change to get into compliance, or is it going to take?
Is it just tech?
Forever.
Well, I I have a response, but I will defer also to your attorney. So your text amendment process takes two to three months just to meet advertising guidelines and requirements.
I don't think they're going to do anything till the end of March.
Right, but what I'm saying is, let's say you adopt the U D O in January.
Right.
Throwing that out there as the example.
Okay.
Uh, in March, they come back with the change that you have to implement. You can do the adoption, the amendment process in three months. You just have to abide by state law.
Right, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
So if we had to make the change because they do something we didn't anticipate.
Yes.
Is it a quick process or is it going to be another six, eight, ten months that we?
No, it's a three month or so process.
Okay.
Now, I'll give you one example, then let me be quiet, let your attorney speak. Um, there was talk about tweaking parking standards yet again. Uh, by the General Assembly, where they would actually eliminate your ability to legally require parking. That's a simple text amendment to delete all your parking standards. It just has to go through the process to be adopted. What I would advise you is your, if I was your planner, and what I would advise your staff in this two to three year warranty period is. You're just going to abide by state law, and you're going to amend your parking section to delete everything. None of that is enforceable anymore. Done. But you have to fix your code.
And that's our current process.
Yeah.
Is once the state law says we can't do it.
It's done.
Quit doing it while we amend the ordinance.
Okay.
Okay, I'm making, I'mma make a motion that we go on the recommended. Pro uh, process that you have recommended.
Okay.
The changes.
Second thing.
With the understanding it's conditional, you you're preserving planning board but requiring B O C C appeal.
You're gonna be, you're gonna be bringing the final document back to us, correct?
Yep.
And I would like, once we get, once you get the final document, I'd love for each one of us to have a chance individually to sit down with you and go through it, because that would help.
Well, we did that originally when I met with you all in the initial process. I'm going to do the same thing again, because that's why. Our processes are so successful.
That makes sense.
So after Kirsty beats me up, after your attorney beats me up, you all will have free.
Good, good luck with Kirsty.
Then we can beat you.
Yeah, we all know better.
But this motion, I I hope is saying that we understand we're preserving the planning board being able to make decisions being appealed to us because.
Everything that he went over on the slide.
His recommendation.
Yeah.
No.
That's not, no, that's not his recommendation.
Right.
Res zoning. What the board agreed to previously was the planning board is the final decision subject to appeal to you.
Right.
Right.
So the motion needs to be that you're recommending the changes as discussed here this evening as an agreed to by you as the elected officials.
I say that. That's my motion.
Do it.
Did I?
I have a motion. I have a second.
With with the caveat that it's, we'd still have to come back for a final vote once you get the final wording.
You all get a couple of different bites at this apple.
Devils in the details.
And before we vote, since I have the motion, the second and all, discussion's kind of over here. Before you come to us with this, can we each individually get an email with all of this?
Yeah.
So we could really.
Well, that's what, that's what.
And then, no, I want the email before we have the one on one.
Yeah.
I can highlight, ask questions and that kind of stuff.
Ideally about two weeks before.
Yeah, give us time now.
Not a problem.
When we don't do this.
That gives me time to send it to Darrell on the print.
There you go. All right, so we got a motion. We got a second. Discussion's over. All those in favor? All right, any opposed? Done.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir.
Down.
Make another break.
Where'd you get this from? Come on down.
Next order of business.
Go ahead and.
Let's roll.
Go ahead and start running. Kathy, you're back up.
This is really easy. I'm sorry, I just ran up here. I asked for coffee.
Well, you ought to sit around. We should have just let you do them back to back.
Krista Campana is with us from Smart Start.
She's been here.
And Smart Start is a nonprofit agency that focuses on education and well being of individuals birth to twenty um, twenty-five to to five. And she's here to per uh, give you uh, present information on the state of daycare in Brunswick County.
You're probably wishing you'd picked a different meeting.
Right, I'm learning, aren't I? Um, I'd like to thank you all for letting me come tonight and share some information and thank all of y'all for hanging in here. It's been a long night. Um, let me make sure I know how to operate this thing. So my plan, as I promised to be brief. Um, I just want to give you a really quick overview of Smart Start of Brunswick County. I want to share just a little bit of data about the childcare situation here in Brunswick and talk about, just touch on a couple of the challenges. So Smart Start's mission is to make meaningful, measurable investments in young children, helping them to reach their full potential. Uh, this is a really broad mission that requires us to cast a really wide net. And that wide net kind of makes it hard to grasp all that we do. Um, we do not care for children directly. Instead, we offer supports and services to individuals. Who have a direct impact on a child's life during those crucial first five years. To just provide some examples of the services that we offer um, at Smart Start, when a child is home with a mom, dad, grandma, aunt. We do provide free weekly playgroups throughout the county at five different locations. When a child has been removed from the home by the court system or by social services. We offer triple P parenting classes with the goal of reunifying the families just as soon as possible. If a young child needs help accessing books, we have Dolly Parton's Imagination Library. If a child has that one year before going to kindergarten, we administer N C pre K, which is a free four year old program. For um, income eligible children. Or if a child is enrolled in a childcare center, we provide supports to the early educator. We provide salary supplements, training, classroom supports, all with the goal of um, making sure the quality of care is high. In addition to that, we also thirty percent of our total allocation goes directly to the local social services here to help families pay for childcare. And um, Smart Start also has the responsibility of making sure that early childhood is at the table and has a voice at every. Task force committee and coalition meeting that we're a part of. So childcare, uh, is it daycare? Is it childcare? Is it preschool? Is it babysitting? Lots of confusing terminology. For tonight's purpose, I'd like to use the word childcare, and what I'm referring to are the years before going to kindergarten, um, birth through age five. And childcare is one of the key pieces to our infrastructure here in Brunswick, just along with transportation, housing and food. Um, I think we could all agree that we all want a safe community. We all want a community that's healthy, and we want a community that has a flourishing economy. And in order to have all of those things, we've got to ensure two things. We've got to make sure that our current workforce has access to quality and affordable childcare. And that our future workforce, which is our youngest children, um, have the opportunity to reach their fullest potential. So here in Brunswick County, we have currently have twenty-two licensed childcare sites. Two of those are head start centers. Um, they serve three and four children, three and four year old children only, and they are um, federally funded. We have thirteen private childcare centers. One religiously affiliated center that serves age two to five, and we have six licensed family childcare homes. These family childcare homes can have up to eight children and they have multi age. So how does Brunswick compare? I mentioned that we have twenty-two licensed childcare sites. Our neighboring counties, you can see them up there, New Hanover, seventy-eight, Pender, thirty-four, Columbus, thirty-four, and Sampson, thirty-nine. We're especially low. Um, we have about sixty-nine hundred children under the age of six, and we have twenty-two licensed childcare sites. To give you some perspective, Columbus County has about thirty-five hundred children and thirty-four cha- uh, licensed childcare sites.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Sure.
Why?
Go back. Why?
Yeah, why? Why these numbers?
Yeah, I I don't know that answer. Um, I know, and I'm going to talk about some of the challenges in general and just a couple of slides. Um, but I don't know why Brunswick is particularly low. Uh, that we have had two childcare centers close in the last year. And that, you know, it's just hardships that maybe some childcare sites have gone through, and we'll talk, if you give me just a minute, we'll talk about some of those challenges. And maybe it just hits some of our sites a little harder.
Is it the median age?
I was kind of thinking since. Literally over forty-five percent of our population is sixty-five and oh, you know, is sixty and over. Is it because grandparents are watching the kids and that we don't have as much of a need?
I I've got a real quick question. You know, uh, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, our school system came to us. And wanted to uh, add four year olds to to the school system.
Right.
So. It is. Were they going to pull from the twenty-two uh, or I mean, is there a need out there that's not being addressed?
It's a really complex issue. I I am in favor of the school system adding pre K. Um, I know that there are private businesses that those are the money making classrooms. You can have more children in a four year old classroom than you can have in a toddler classroom. So I certainly don't want to hurt the private childcare businesses, but I think there was a, there would be a way to be creatively give incentives to sites. Um, to supplement infant and toddler slots where you'll see in a minute that we are very low in. Um. So, you know, I I do not know why Brunswick is especially low. Um, I I've been here for four years and we've been low in comparison ever since. We have dropped. But there's nationwide, there's a crisis and every county is feeling it. And within all of these counties, I don't know offhand without doing some research if Columbus County has more licensed family childcare homes. Which is lower capacity in comparison, you know, it it could vary.
Wouldn't it be too uh, the county, our county is a a rich county. What are we rate, what's our level?
We're a wealthy county.
We're, we're.
We're tier one.
Whereas we're tier one. Okay, then Columbus County is what, tier?
Three.
Three. So they they probably get more money. For.
Oh, sure.
The daycare. So that's why that.
I don't, I don't think so, but.
That's part of it.
Yeah, um, it's a very complex system, but if you look at, you know, Brunswick County, like I said, we have almost sixty-nine hundred children under the age of six. Columbus has thirty-five hundred. So while we do have wealthy retirees moving here, we also have young families moving here.
I wonder if some of that's because of a perception that we don't have those young families and people think, oh, that's just a bunch of retirees. We don't need to put our childcare business there.
Yeah.
We need to maybe market the fact that there's the need.
You might be working in Wilmington and taking them over there.
Give me just a couple of slides, and I think some of these questions.
You're going to answer all of our questions.
And um, you might be stealing my thunder on some of this.
On that, an hour ago, we passed a three hundred and fifty million dollar school bond, so we know we have a need.
But I'll be happy to answer all of them in just a second and and. We'll see how this takes us, but just to give you an idea of, this is a snapshot of showing where these childcare sites, these twenty-two sites are located around the county. Um, the middle column where I have capacity to serve, that is zero to twelve, that includes after school care. And you can see the total for capacity to serve is one thousand seven hundred ninety-eight. This means on their licenses is the max amount that they can have, taking into consideration space and teacher child ratio. So keep in mind, again, we have almost sixty-nine hundred children. We have the capacity to serve seventeen ninety-eight. Longwood I've um, highlighted here, and they are, they have the capacity to serve sixty children, but I want to point out that this is a head start center. So they are serving three and four year old children only, and they are um, based on income only. There are no other childcare sites there. And then you can see on the column on the right, it's the capacity to serve number of infants, and this is really where. We're having a crisis. Um, we can serve right now approximately a hundred and six infants in the entire county in licensed regulated care. Um, you can see in Leland where we're talking about all the areas that are booming, they have the capacity to serve twenty-three. We are low in infant and toddler care, and again, it's, these classrooms are not money making classrooms. Um, you can have. Five infants, depending on your license, five infants for one caregiver.
Ms. Campagnette, hasn't that always been the problem? Nobody wants to take in infants.
It it could perhaps.
My boys are thirty to forty-five. It's always been a problem.
It's always been tricky. Most, most private childcare centers have one infant classroom where they can have up to ten children. Um, there has always been a need. You can put more four year olds, more three year olds in a classroom. There is a stigma. That in, you know, caring for infants is babysitting, where we know at Smart Start especially, all of that brain development occurs in those earliest years, so it can be the most crucial. Um, but there is a reputation that they're underappreciated and are undervalued. So just some challenges here. Number one challenge, I think we've heard the constant theme here tonight is that Brunswick County is growing. It's no secret we're the fastest growing county in North Carolina. There is a steady increase in our rising kindergartners each year. Mr. Cole talked about how the the schools are bursting at the seams. Um, sixty percent of our households are single parent or both parents working, and that's another misconception, I think. Um, you know, in our county, we have a lot of wealth, and we have a lot of poverty. And that wealth, you know, it kind of averages out here to show when you're talking about the need.
Well, we know that. We know that if you go. In some portions of the county, it's very affluent, and then if you go in other portions of the county, it's not. We know that.
Yeah.
It's just that the, but that's the way they class us. They just class us from one perspective and.
It is, it is a challenge.
It is.
Uh, a second challenge here is a lack of workforce, and this is a biggie. Is that um, our early educators are earning on average twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Forty-eight percent of them are on public assistance.
Go back to you.
One, one, one slide back.
Okay.
The bottom line?
Sixty percent of households?
Yeah, maybe I'm, my math is off. Sixty percent of households are single parent or both parents working.
Mm hmm.
What am I missing? What else is there? Why isn't that a hundred percent?
Meaning not a stay at home parent. Uh, I think the intent there was both parents are needing to work in order to make the household run. Instead of what used to be fifty years ago, where the the husband would go to work and the woman would stay home and take care. So it's just shifting in terms of that.
Is that sixty percent?
It didn't shift when I was, I was married, because I've been married fifty-five years and both of us had to work and we had to take care of our children.
We figured it out.
Yeah.
Is that sixty percent of the sixty-eight ninety? Is that sixty percent of the sixty-eight ninety-four on the top line?
Um, I, I would think so. I'd have to double-check those figures. I got them from
Obviously, it's not sixty percent of all households, because most of Brunswick County has grandkids.
Right. It's households with young children, right. But, but you're right. Every household is different and unique, and their situations have been a specific way. Okay, back to low wages. We talked about, um, the wages. There is a lack of health insurance, if health insurance is offered at all. Many other early educators are choosing, um, retail jobs, working at McDonald's, the gas station, they're making higher wages. Or going to the public schools for a better schedule, better pay. Uh, the third challenge here is cost of operating expenses. I mentioned that we had two sites closed. Cost of operating expenses is high, and I don't think a lot of people understand that a childcare, private childcare center can be open from six-thirty in the morning till six at night. So it's more than one shift personnel is expensive. Because if you were an economist looking at this business model, i- it's kind of a no-brainer, right? You need to pay your, your staff more, so you increase the tuition. But the tuition is already unaffordable for many families. So it's kind of a business model like no other. Also reimbursement rates are low. We talked about childcare subsidy. Um, and we also have NC pre-K reimbursement rates. They do not equal what a private-paid parent would pay. They are lower, significantly lower. Our, um, childcare sites are operating at fifty-five percent capacity right now. So it's similar to if you go to a restaurant and you see empty tables and you wonder what in the world, why am I waiting? There's empty tables. Same kind of situation. They don't have the staff. Those staff working at restaurants can't afford to live here in Brunswick County. It's very similar for our early educators. So they're closing classrooms or they're having just one teacher in a classroom to lower the ratio. And currently with our current capacity of one thousand seven hundred ninety-eight, I believe, we can serve only twenty-six percent of the population. Now, Ms. Iks, back to what you were saying, is that many families are making other decisions. Childcare is not for everybody. And it's, you know, what I want to push and press is that families deserve choices that are affordable and quality. Some families, um, have grandma taking care of them. Some families have a neighbor, I mean, they have good quality, but I believe there's some unregulated, um, too many children in an environment kind of situations going on. And I think the school system, I think Mr. Cole, I think these kindergarten teachers would tell you that these children are coming to kindergarten not ready. And that's a direct correlation, in my opinion. Uh, high cost of tuition. Parents are paying, that's challenge number four, is my last one. I promise, I'm trying to hurry. Um, parents are paying, I'm sure you've seen in the news, about twelve thousand dollars for, um, infant care every year. Uh, forty percent of their income is going to childcare. Uh, there is a lack of transportation in our county and shift work. I don't know of one licensed or regulated site that offers second shift, third shift. So that is an issue for many of our families. Um, there's childcare deserts. I showed you Longwood. There's Navassa. There's Ash. There are no licensed childcare sites in that area. There are four-year-olds that qualify for our free four-year-old program, but there is no sites there. And the closest site would be Shalote, but the Shalote sites can't afford to transport back and forth. So there's a real issue with that. There's also no openings or availability. If I was a pregnant mother, I would need to get on the list as soon as I got pregnant. There would be no guarantee that I would have a spot by the time I had that baby. You could see there was only a hundred and six slots. If that's what I needed, a hundred and six slots in the county.
Well, the problem is you've got a large county. It's a rural county.
Yeah.
And then, you know, you have a, a high number of people that are living or actually working outside of the county. Uh, we are, you know, two of us are on economic development. We're doing everything we know to do to bring in the jobs in here.
Mm-hmm.
But it's challenging at best. So that being said, in, in a perfect world, it'd be people lived in an urban area, not an urban area, but an area that has all this the transportation and the jobs and everything else, but a lot of jobs are seasonal here. You know, a lot of them are service-based, uh, jobs, and that's still geared to seasonal. So there's a lot of unique aspects with this area. What, but I'd also submit that it is not unlike some of the other counties that are on the coast or in the mountainous areas. But you won't find that to be the case with the Piedmont area, you know, more centrally based, because they don't have these spikes. And you see a lot of times the community centers have the jobs and everything is very close. I mean, I, I grew up in a mill town and I know what you're saying about the spouses working. I know that, and that's a disparity. And, and so they're trying to fix it.
Right. It's, I'm not coming to you, I promise.
No, I know you're not. I'm just saying the frustration is, how do you fix it? Because, you know, we've run numbers on transportation studies and we found out that you could put a person in a cab, an Uber for less than it would be to task one bus to go out and pick somebody up in an area that's twenty miles away each way to get them to a job. You can't do it. So I, I don't know.
We have some extra challenges in here, so right. I mean, I think we have to think really creatively. There's no magic answer. I'm not coming to you asking or even having the magic answer myself, except to bring awareness. Um, I think we need to look at, there's models that have businesses, um, support childcare on-site. I think, you know, during COVID, there was restaurants that opened family childcare homes just for their staff. So those staff could work and be guaranteed to come to work. There's some creative models out there. It takes money and it takes collaboration. Um,
That's a win-win also when you have an operation like that, because people say, look, I've, there's childcare for my, my child here. I can work and there's still that operation. And so, yeah, there's a lot of advantages there.
I think there's some creative ways, but without quality childcare during those years before going to kindergarten, um, you know, kindergarten teachers are spending three-fourths of the year managing behaviors as opposed to teaching. Children aren't reading proficient in the third grade. There's speech and language delays that are going undetected. We know there's a direct correlation between low literacy rates and incarceration rates, low literacy levels and incarceration rates. And it's, you know, extra stress on a family if they're unable to work. Um, so again, you know, I, this, my goal for tonight was just to start the conversation, bring awareness um, and stress to you all and everybody here that early childhood is everybody's business. Um, we all have a social responsibility and we need to think collaboratively and creatively, and that's what it's going to take to make some headway on this. I don't know if I answered questions about Brunswick County in specific, you know, I, I can't tell you without polling people who have closed. Um, you know, it's, it's just a challenge.
Yeah. You said I, I have a son who's forty-six years old. It was a challenge forty-six years ago.
Yeah, and it, it's the same conversation. Early educators are paid low. If we could somehow throw, I mean, we give salary supplements, but it's a hundred and forty thousand dollars. It's a drop in the bucket. We need quadruple that. And if we could, you know, pay the early educators, the demand would be there. I mean, it's just kind of a balance thing, but it's a business like no other. Any other questions for me? I know y'all ready to go home.
Question?
Thank you.
We thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Very much. Appreciate it. Get you a Mountain Dew for the drive home.
Yeah. Come on, Brent. We're chugging along here tonight.
Public hearing.
Got a motion to close the public hearing already? Go ahead.
So we're, we're here to request the Board of Commissioners following the conclusion of a public hearing to prove amending the sewer use ordinance and utility process, utility policy as presented. Let's see. So staff, uh, reviewed the, uh, sewer use ordinance and identified several areas where clarification or additional language would improve both understanding and implementation. The first proposed amendment is in Article two, Section three point one, which outline, outlines the requirement for connections for structures located within two hundred feet of an existing sewer main. The updated language expands the requirement beyond single-family dwellings to include duplexes and other multifamily residential structures. In addition, the amendment introduces new provisions for properties based on their distance from the right-of-way. Subsection A establishes that a structure located more than two hundred feet from the right-of-way may apply for gravity connections with the understanding that the applicant could be required to install a new injector pump if permitted by the state law and plumbing codes. Section B allows for applications to connect to a low-pressure sewer system when the structure is between two and three hundred feet from the proposed low-pressure main. Subsection C provides the director with discretion to approve connections beyond three hundred feet from the sewer main. Any questions on that proposed change?
Uh, just one question. Obviously, in the second set of red lines, it refers to habitable structures. Is that considered to be applied to, is all structures under this considered habitable? So if you're passing a field with a random barn that nothing lives in it but cows, that's not going to count.
Yeah, that's habitable, yes, which is the, uh, duplexes and other to clarify.
I just wanted to make sure if you're passing a farmer that happens to have a barn out there that we weren't accidentally sticking that under this.
Yes.
But I, I feel like I've been in, I've been overwhelmed with stuff coming at us tonight. And so what are you basically saying that the change is here? Just break it down. What is you're basically saying? The differences?
He's an engineer, so he doesn't speak English.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah.
More people are going to be able to connect.
Okay, so that's a good thing.
Yes.
Okay.
Brent, why couldn't you just say that?
I'm not a lawyer. All right. But on the flip side, is that a must or is that a shall? I mean, I'm, well, I mean, it's, it's the same.
It's a may.
It's a may. So in other words, if they wanted to stay in septic or something, they could do that.
Right. This is not a, this is not a case where you are within X feet of the sewer line, you have to connect. This is a case of they're a little bit further out and they can connect if they want to.
Good, okay.
It's just just for, um, residential?
Frank's got a horse he wants to serve.
Yes, ma'am, residential.
This is just residential. Okay. Just wanted to check.
Hmm, all right.
Yeah, if you can find some residential that's three hundred foot apart and they develop the land, I'd love to see that.
I think it's three hundred feet deep.
Deep.
I got a lot of that where I live.
We're getting sleepy and tired, I think.
Aren't you?
We are.
All right, you got to open the public hearing.
Pardon me?
I don't think he's done.
Yeah, there's one more.
Yeah.
I'll make it quick. All right, so the next, uh, the next amendment occurs in Article two, Section four, point one, and it outlines the process and procedure for required connections to the existing sewer. The proposed update adds subsection I, which strengthens the existing requirements related to low-pressure sewer extensions permitted through North Carolina Department of Environment and Quality when new developments or subdivision and planned development occurs. It, and it provides, uh, three specific exceptions to those rules. One is a connection may be allowed for any single-family duplex or small commercial structure on a lot subdivided prior to November first, twenty twenty-five. The second is a subdivision revol- resulting from a court action, such as those executed through a will and family subdivisions creating no more than ten lots, provided all requirements of the unified development ordinance are met. Do you like?
Yeah, what was the one?
Okay.
What, what is the?
You have, translation.
If you're doing a large development and you're going to connect, you're going to need to get a state permit. If you're normal people and everyone else, you won't need a permit.
Well, we're, we're going to work on you, Brent. All right, so you're done? I can open this public hearing?
I'm done.
Okay, I need a motion to go into a public hearing?
You can just, so moved.
Yeah, it's true. You don't even have to. Yeah, we'll open the public hearing. We don't even have to go through all of that. Okay, I have one, if, if he's still here and he's crazy. Gary Crowden, is that not, did I pronounce that correctly? Crowden, C-R-O-W. I don't know if it's D-E-N-D-A-N, Crowden?
I think they're gone.
Gary, Gary got tired of waiting.
The marathon.
One more time, Gary Crowden? Okay, Gary left.
Moved to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Uh, public hearing is closed. What is the?
Move approval to propose changes in a second.
Williams Cook? Any, any debate? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, sounded unanimous.
All right.
Thank you, Brent.
Uh-huh.
We'll get you a dictionary in English.
It's still up here.
Oh, yeah, you go on to the next one, don't you? Administrative report.
All right, so now we're requesting the Board of Commissioners authorize the Chairman and Clerk aboard to execute contract price amendment number one with state utility contractors establishing a guaranteed maximum price in the amount of two million, one hundred fifty-three thousand, five hundred dollars for the Southeast Area Improvement St. James Water Infrastructure Project, which is aimed at improving water flow and pressure in the area in and around St. James. So back several years ago, we entered into a, in our local agreement with the town of St. James to, uh, look at projects to provide, uh, additional pressure within St. James and around in the surrounding area. Um, we decided, we did a preliminary engineering report and determined some of the projects that would need to be done. And in two thousand twenty-three, we made a decision to use the design-build method uh, for delivery of this project. Um, and then in two thousand twenty-four, we entered into a design-build a progressive design-build contract with state utility contractors. So progressive design build basically means it's done in two phases. The first phase is the engineering and producing construction drawings that will allow the contractor to get to a guaranteed maximum price for constructing the project. So we've done that. We're at the end of, nearing the end of phase one. We've negotiated a, a, a GMP. Um, for most of the projects identified in the PER. However, the, one of the projects we were originally proposing, we ran into some challenges with, uh, obtaining necessary easements and permits. So, uh, for a waterline extension down Middleton Road. So rather than delay the projects, what we've decided to do is submit the projects, uh, that'll provide the most benefit and get a GMP to complete that construction and then look at a later date once we get to clear, um, get, get some more direction on the easements and clear up those issues. The projects that we'll be doing as part of this GMP will be a waterline to connect a gap in the two-eleven waterline, uh, near and around St. James, basically from the two-eleven plant to, uh, St. James Development. We'll connect that gap and then we'll provide some interconnections within the St. James Development itself. Those two projects will provide most of the benefit, uh, to St. James and the surrounding area in increasing their water pressure. Um, the extension down Middleton Road, like I said, we'll look at it, uh, as we get more information and clear up some of the easement and permitting issues. So I am done and I request that the board approve and the contract price amendment number one with state utility.
Can you move our screen up one paragraph? They'd have to do it over there, I think. So, uh, CDM Smith is part of this award?
Yes, sir. They're part of the contracting with state utilities.
I didn't flag anybody, did I?
Hey, it's a red flag for me.
But they've already been awarded the contract in August of twenty-four.
Right, this is part of the contract the board awarded to state utility contractors and CDM Smith back in September of twenty-three.
September of when?
Twenty-three. It's been under design that whole time.
That was, that was whenever we were on good terms.
Well, and St. James gave money towards this project, which was AARP money, uh, ARPA money, and I don't remember how much they gave.
Is, is, I have a question then. Yeah, guys. CDM Smith picking the contractor to do this work?
No, we picked the contract team, which was state utility contractors, and they teamed CDM Smith.
Okay. I want to hold somebody accountable if CDM Smith is part of.
Smith is involved. I instantly get agita.
Yeah, well, and I agree, but right now, this is, this is old stuff that's finally getting Yeah, well, and I agree, but right now, this is, this is old stuff that's finally getting to the point where the design is, or the design has been done or included in this project, the design for Phase One, which this has been on hold for some time. And I think I brought it up numerous times because it not just helped St. James, it helped the surrounding area to have better water pressure. And I know sometimes in St. James, they don't even have water to even shower. So, um, and they, I mean, the water pressure is terrible.
I hear that in other areas of the county, BSLs like that.
Yeah, I mean, I just, my, my concern was I didn't want them to start on doing something and three years or four years from now, we're still doing something.
Well, and, 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 and you're right, there's no guarantee on that. Did you find, how much?
We got one point nine million from St. James.
One point nine million from St. James, so.
You're making a motion?
Yes, I'm making a motion that we move forward.
I'll second it.
Sykes Williams? I have a motion, I got a second. Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you, Brent.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Moving on.
I will be quick.
Thompson had asked that.
Uh, first off, let me say that the Brunswick County Fair and Expo was probably one of the more exciting things that happened last week. Kudos goes to all those, the Hardy family and everyone else that was involved in that. And I think Commissioner Sykes has got things.
Yeah, Kyle Bridges was the fair manager. Brandon Hardy's the president, Randy Hardy is the vice president, Allison and Bri- Brian Newcomb and Kristy Hardy is part of the group that did all the work. They spent around nineteen hundred hours.
Wow.
Yeah. So, so my, my request is, is this to, to administration. You know, a lot of people commented that it would be great to see the fair and see it in the central part of the county. I would like for us to do some type of investigation in the two eleven site to see what it would cost to turn a part of that site into a fairground. Now, I know that the, the Hardys and the committee that worked on making the Brunswick County Fair such a success has already signed a contract with the amusement company. So my request is, is that we work together with them, just like we do with partnerships for other, from, from New Hope Clinic to, to anybody that provides a service to Brunswick County. This is a service. And if, if, if they would like and if we want to contract with them, I, I'm okay with that because they were successful at this venture. But what I'm saying is, is that if we can prepare a different site that's central to the county for more attendees to be able to, to attend it and the county can provide that to the committee or to the folks, the, the nonprofit that, that did the county fair. And I think it's something we need to investigate and look at for future use in years to come.
If I may state, there's, Commissioner Forte and I have talked about it. I've also talked to Steve Stone about it and was thinking maybe we come up with maybe a long range perspective that maybe it fades in that we eventually get two eleven site up to speed, maybe like a CIP type thing, we get up to speed. And then at that time, that fair is going to outgrow itself. And at that time, they can morph and bring it over to the other side with us and we can work on a collaborative aspect of it. So, yeah.
And, and, and if it's going to take us years to get there with the site?
Right now.
Because it, it would be great to have a fixed facility for the cattle show, a fixed facility. Maybe we could even put equestrian stuff in there. I mean, you know, not, not a huge facility, but you know, a ring.
It could be a staging area as we discussed, you know, initially years ago. I mean, it could be.
Could be a staging area for disaster. So try to get all kinds of funding. But my next request would be, and again, I'm asking for the, the board to support direction to the manager. Whenever we do the budget for this year, if it is going to be years out before we do something like this for the fairground, then I think we need a partnership with the fair because they had to put out money for, first off, they were given a price to provide EMS and the price was so overwhelming, they couldn't provide EMS on site. I think we need to work through that and, and work that out for them for the future. Law enforcement, I think they've got over ten thousand dollars invested in law enforcement assistance. Maybe we could put some minor figure in the budget next year. I mean, one tent costs them well over twenty thousand dollars to rent.
Twenty-six thousand for the tent.
So, I mean, so, you know, if we can do something small, because the citizens, everything that I saw, the citizens really, really thought that that was a successful event. And I think with the name Brunswick County on it, I think we need to have a partnership if nothing else. So, but, but again, they did a great job.
Well, well, I would like to reimburse them for the security because they didn't even have EMS. And basically, if something had happened, the law enforcement would have had took over. But with the county liable, because they're our employees, right? They were our employees on the job.
No, they were under secondary employment through a third party.
And how does that work? The, these folks, so we get a list of employees that are taking time off from their regular hours?
It is my understanding. We used to have a program where deputies would do off-duty employment and receive a ten ninety-nine at the discretion, at the request of the prior sheriff. Apparently deputies are having issues with their ten ninety-nines. And they wanted to bring in a more formal off-duty mechanism. And they use a third party. The deputies, I believe, are able to volunteer for the off-duty work and they're paid through the third party.
Cool.
Okay, then I, then me, I don't know what they want to do. But anytime that takes place, we need to know that they are off-duty because are you getting a list of the names and whether or not they're signing in that they're working? Because they sign in from home, in their cars, when they get in the cars, they're signing in, they're logging in, and then they log out whenever. So are we getting a list to say they're off-duty because they're working somewhere else right now? Or we don't have anything in the personnel record of time to show that they're off-duty?
I believe the sheriff has that. He's going to provide the information to me. And in fact, as he explained to me this afternoon, there was some mix. They, the fair contracted for some number of security man-hours. And he felt, given the number of people on the site and the potential risk, that he needed to simply assign some of his regular staff. So he's going to give us a cost breakdown of what the people that, that were and were not on his payroll during that event.
Okay, so you'll let us know.
And we'll, 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 we'll share that with you and, and certainly if, if you.
We, we got to stop everybody just talking over one another. Let, let me recognize people. Pat, were you done?
I'm done right now.
Frank had asked. Just in general, I'm a hundred percent supportive of Commissioner Thompson's ideas, first of helping them and putting it in the budget. I think it was an amazing thing and also without stepping on their toes, seeing if there's a way to have it in the central part of the county. But I, under no circumstances would we want to shortcut what they did because they invested time, energy, blood, sweat and tears. And we deserve to, right, they deserve for us to recognize that. So I don't want to say you're going to go to the middle of the county if they don't want to.
That's right. If they want to partner, we'll partner. If they don't, then let's support them where they're at.
But this ties into something that, and I think, Pat, you'd have some talks with people about this a while back as well, about a long-term vision for that two eleven property that certainly could include a fairground, but it could include a whole lot more. And I'd like to see us look at that, you know, and I think Commissioner Cook touched on that. Maybe get together a steering committee of staff, some community partners and others to look at what is the long-term vision for the property because it's just sitting there. And I certainly think if we're going to do things that draw tourism out there, our TDA ought to have some skin in the game. And maybe, maybe some of their budget could help with this and that's just a thought.
Good one.
Because this is a tremendous tourism thing for our county. But get some people together from the community, a cup, maybe a couple of us, but, and really map out what is the plan for that. When I met with some of the agriculture people, I was driving to Raleigh one day and stopped and toured the Duplin County Ag Center and Civic Center. And that is out in the middle of nowhere draws lots and lots of people to rural Duplin County and they spend money while they're there. And we could look at something like that. And I think with our legislators, we could probably secure some state funding for that down the road as well. So I don't know what that would look like, but it'd be great to, while we're looking at this, to maximize a really good plan for that whole property.
So I'm just looking to give county some direction from the board so we can.
I, I have an opinion or two on this as well.
Well, go ahead.
I, I cannot thank Kyle Bridges and the Hardy family anymore for the, the sweat equity that they put into us, because let's be honest, we did nothing. The county was not involved in this, okay? They did. I agree with you. I would love to see that two eleven site used. And we've talked about it ad nauseam over the years and we've never done a thing. But I also don't, I don't want to smack Kyle and the Hardys in the face. They're the ones who did this. They're the ones who made this hopefully a continuing success. You know, you open up a restaurant tomorrow, I don't care what kind of restaurant, it's going to do booming business for a month. You don't know what it's going to do after that. Everybody wants to see the shiny new thing. First of all, let them run their thing. They did sign a three-year agreement for the property and the amusement. So we can't do anything for three years anyway. I absolutely would love to see it in the Senate of the county. I agree. But we should put, we should get in the same room with Kyle and the Hardys.
Yeah.
What is your vision? What could we do to help you? We have this eight hundred and thirty-five acres. A lot of it's wetlands and isn't really all that usable. But what could we do to help you to make this something big? I, I think that's the way to go about it. And don't just assume we can do that.
And I agree with that a hundred percent.
And I agree. Frank and I were just talking about it. We, we do need to invite them in to be formally recognized.
Absolutely.
And whether it's a proclamation or whatever.
But I think a proclamation is in order.
They need to be recognized.
Yep.
And I think as, as far as the two eleven property, I'd like for us to examine our options with that. And it may include a fairgrounds, but if they want to stay where they are, it may not. But that, you know, it's a property that, you know, it's sitting there and it's an asset we need to find a way to use.
We gotta do something with that.
I don't know the answer to that, but it's.
I got one more thing.
Okay, Pat?
But do y'all want, are y'all voting on any of that?
I don't know yet.
Because I was going to bring up.
Do we need to vote on it or y'all could?
I'd like to say something, what were you?
Okay, well, uh, in, including with the ten ninety-nine and this company, if, if we're, if they're paying an off-company for security, that's what you're saying, right? Okay, so, and the deputies are getting ten ninety-nines, right?
That's my understanding.
Okay, so they're saying they're not employed, but we're using all the county cards, all uniforms. Everything is used county. So if the company is supposed to reimburse the county some, or are they not?
I can get you more detail on it.
I want to know.
This just ended last night. Well, you're not going to have numbers yet.
First time. Oh, yeah, this.
Well, your hatred of the Sheriff's Department is well noted.
This is not hatred of the Sheriff's Department. This is being accountable for money.
Get it, but it just ended at ten o'clock last night. We've been here, you're not going to have numbers yet.
Yeah, they do.
Okay.
But I want to know what this company charges to do this. If we pay ten thousand dollars, how much are they keeping?
Okay.
I, I, I mean, because it might be better if they just be employees and work the fair. The difference is the liability.
The, well, at all times, they're acting under the authority of the sheriff.
That's right.
But I believe it comes into overtime and workers' comp considerations.
Well, and overtime now is tax-free, so. But anyway, I, I'd just like to know the, the stuff.
Why do you have something?
Yeah, I did. And I want everybody to understand that, you know, I know we know this, but, you know, we've been trying to look at that two eleven plot, location for a long time. And the thing about it was you'd have to sit there and prepare it and then you're hopeful that maybe you can develop something like what has been developed. And maybe that'll make it, you know, a viable site. They've already done that. They did that. And I don't want to hijack and none of us do. None of us want to hijack what they've done, what they have done. We want to add to it, complement it, partner with, collaborate with, whatever the words are, to try to help them in their efforts and make it even better. So I think, you know, joining forces with them, however they would like to join forces with us. You know, we want to be a partner with them on it. And the thing is, what they've done is expeditiously, they've put this thing together in a way that we didn't have to sit here and look at the feasibility of it and maybe we could, maybe you can get something. No, they did it. So it maybe if we back off, say we get ourselves thirty-six months, maybe we can have a place. And Randy, I think, you know, like we talked about staging area, we can put something for the law enforcement out there. We can do a lot of assets that could be out there and it'd be something that grows. But I think we're going to need a short-term and a long-term plan. And then maybe within three years, we'd be in a position where we can say, okay, if you guys want to move over here to the central part of the county, come on, we got a place for you, you know? That's at least my thoughts, so.
Anything else on this matter?
No. No.
You guys have direction? You understand what we're looking for?
Right.
I don't think it requires any kind of motion, right? Okay, moving on, number.
My, my next one's going to be quick. Uh, under, uh, it was, uh, item A, operation services, the convenience site fees.
Right.
I, I get more feedback from folks on this. Do we have to pay them a CIP of two and a quarter percent?
Ye- yes, sir, we do. We went, went through this last year too. For some reason, for several years, they didn't ask for a CPI adjustment. But the contract wording is very clear that if they ask for it, that we are obligated to do it. And this current contract term runs through June thirty of twenty twenty-eight.
When, when is GFL's contract up for renewal?
That, that's it. The, the current one runs through June thirty, twenty twenty-eight.
Okay, cool.
If you look, there's actually in the item, there's a detailed chart. And we did, staff had to negotiate with them a bit because rather than using normal math principles, they wanted to round everything up to the nearest dollar. And our staff said, no, we're going to use math. And so if you actually look at the charges, most of the most common consumer charges aren't going to go up because they went up less than fifty cents. So they rounded them down and they stayed the same. And, and a few of them have gone up, but like the household garbage bags, I think there's no increase.
Okay.
A full, a full truckload of C and D's going to go from eighty dollars to eighty-five dollars. And I think that's the biggest one.
Well, seeing how I pulled the item, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Well, uh, before you do that, I, I'd like to ask the question if you don't mind. The yard waste where it says a full load, the utility trailer charges. Sometimes we have a full load and sometimes we don't. And it says here, yard waste full load, thirty dollars current rate, and it's going to thirty-two. I've always paid forty or fifty dollars at the convenience site. Or is this here at the Bolivia site?
This, this is, this is the convenience site prices.
No, I just did it a couple of weeks ago.
The, these are the convenience site prices and they have big metal signs at each site.
No, they don't.
With the prices on them.
No, they don't.
No, they don't.
Southport, you go in there, there's not a sign anywhere with a price on it.
But I do have to sign now because I.
How about a check on that?
And it depends on what move that old guy is in and what you're going to pay.
I'm, I'm telling you, I paid forty dollars for my. I'm telling you, I paid 40 dollars for my.
I'm not saying they didn't charge you that.
To me, there's no prices. The old guy that's always there, it depends on his mood.
He only knows 40 dollars.
We.
Southport?
Southport, the one with Smithfield Park there. He charges what he's in the mood for. There's no rhyme or reason.
A female sometime.
I've always had that old guy.
I had a female.
I don't know that ass. Going back, I'll make my.
Okay.
We have a second. Thompson, Williams, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So that concludes all of that. However, I turned this thing over so many times, I don't even know where I am.
What, there's more?
Okay, well, we have other business and formal discussions. Does anybody have anything they want to bring up? I got one quick thing.
Go ahead.
One quick thing. This evening, there was a special call meeting in Leland. They passed an ordinance to prohibit open burning for land clearing. I would like for the county to investigate that and come back to us at the next meeting with how they were able to do that.
They, the municipalities operate under a different statute than the counties.
So you're telling me that we can't do it because of statute?
Yes, the the statutes do not, we, 10 or 12 years ago, we had authority to do that. And the General Assembly removed that authority from counties, but they didn't remove it from cities.
Well, I guess you don't have to come back to me then.
We're we're not sure exactly the terms under which they did that tonight, but they they do at least theoretically have legislative authority.
I don't see how they do. I make a motion to adjourn.
Nope, 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 nope.
Nope, denied.
What is Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir. If I can get a motion in our closed session, just went to 143, 31811A1 and 3 to approve minutes and consult with Attorney.
No.
That's why I asked at the beginning when we were doing the agenda, I said, Mr. Attorney, and then you said, well, no, it's already on there.
And you're gonna have a bad time in the morning tonight.
What if this motion?
It can't be postponed.
I didn't hear anybody.
I hadn't heard anybody willing to make the motion yet.
I'm not willing to make a motion.
I'll make the motion. We go into closed session.
I second.
Porte Sykes, all in favor? Stand up when it's called.
Aye, 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 aye.